Please rise. June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Council is now in session. Warden Liz Danielson presiding.
Good morning. Please be seated. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty twenty Michi Soggy territory. And in the traditional territory of the Michi Soggy and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area. And recognize its original inhabitants as the stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. When it comes to adopting the agenda, we have several additions. One is with respect to the recruitment services for this, the C A O. There's also a piece of correspondence that has been added to the correspondence listing. From the health unit requesting support to to look at their current funding formula. As well, we have the appointment of the deputy warden under other business. So could I have a move in a second or two adopt the agenda as amended, councilors Ryle and Dayu?
Moved by councillor Ryle, second by councillor Dayu. Be it resolved that the June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three Halliburton County Council agenda be approved as amended?
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature there today?
I do have a couple. Madam Warden, I have councillor Dayu has advised that she has a pecuniary interest on item nine point two and twelve point two of our agenda. And we'll be leaving the meeting for those portions.
Thank you. Could I have a move in a second or to adopt the minutes from May the twenty-fourth? Councilor Shell and McCackney?
Moved by councillor Shell, second by councillor McCackney. Be it resolved that the minutes from the May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted as circulated?
All in favor? That's carried. I don't believe we have any business arising from our previous meeting. So could I have a mover in a second or two go into closed session? Councilor Shell and McCackney?
Moved by councillor Shell, second by councillor McCackney. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council enter into closed session for the following reasons. A trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, or organization.
All in favor? That's carried. Welcome back to the open session. We're now going to have delegations. And our first delegation is from the Eastern Ontario Regional Network. We have with us this morning Jason Saint Pierre, who's the CEO. Lisa Seven Severson, who is their communications director. And we also have with us Heather rightly, who's Communications and Stakeholder Relations Officer. So welcome to Halliburton County. And over to you for your public presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. And good morning to everybody. You know, driving in this morning, it was a little bit of flashbacks from years gone past where I presented in this room many times. In a former life and a former career, but always fond memories when I'm coming across Loon Lake through Halliburton and over this way. I always want to stop in Halliburton, but didn't quite make it there today. So maybe on the way back. So we'll just go through the the presentation if it's, there we go. It's coming up here. So for our agenda today, we just want to go through a few slides just to bring everybody up to speed and a little reminder on who we are. What our projects are past and present, as well as an overview of the technologies. Our twenty twenty-three initiatives and then time for questions if there's any at the end. Next slide, please. So who we are? So the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, we are a non-for-profit organization dedicated to the improving rural connectivity. And supporting economic growth and enhancing quality of life. So we really do have a focus on our rural environments in in Eastern Ontario. We were created by the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus in two thousand and ten. To help create innovative public, private partnerships to address the digital divide. And support a stronger future for rural communities in Eastern Ontario. And when this was created in two thousand and ten, it was a, the P three partnership concept was very new at that point, especially in the broadband space. And really showcase the opportunity for regional governments to work with their provincial and federal counterparts, as well as with the private sector. We are a small team of thirteen employees and we govern everything we do through innovative solutions to regional matters by leveraging partnerships with a focus on regional orientation. Next slide, please. So just a short history on some of our projects here. So in two thousand and ten, the E O W C created the Eastern Ontario Regional Network as a non-for-profit organization. And that's what we started with the original broadband project. In two thousand and fourteen, the E R N team negotiated a ten-year fiber contract with Bell Canada. In two thousand and fifteen, we actually completed the first phase of the broadband project. A lot of that was wireline copper D S L at that point. So as we look at the evolution of where we've come from, it was from dial up at nine point six kilobits per second to at that point when we initially started, that was one point five megabits per second was a huge upgrade. Now we're talking fifty ten through wireless solutions. And in some areas within the county, we're looking at fiber to the home type solutions where it can be up to three gigabits per second. So in a short timeline, we're not even talking ten years, really. The evolution of technology has been incredible. And the impacts in Halliburton County has been large as well. As I said, I remember coming here years ago and talking about the opportunity of economic development for D S L broadband where we were hoping to keep people here on a Friday till maybe a Monday. And now you're looking at people being able to work around the world from their cottages or their their summer homes in Halliburton County and areas in Eastern Ontario. In two thousand and fifteen, the cell gap advocacy begins, and that's a date just to keep in mind as we go through this. In two thousand and twenty, the government's support for the cell gap project secured. So five years of local advocacy, as well as that from the R N, the O W C, to be able to try to build that business case and garner enough support for the funding required. In two thousand and twenty-one, Rogers was announced as a successful partner for the Eastern Ontario Regional Network to bring that, close that cell gap. And that was done through a competitive R F P process. And in two thousand and twenty-two, the first towers were constructed and and in service. Next slide, please. So we've added a couple of slides here based on some feedback when we've done these outreach, just on the differences between cellular and wireless and mobile technologies. So cellular versus fixed wireless. So cellular, which is what our project is based on, it was funded to be able to close the digital divide, but primarily through the voice applications. The digital data aspect of this for wireless broadband was not part of the scope of our project when we did the application. But we are seeing an evolution through the introduction of the technology that will allow for some of those services. So our project through the cell gap is to actually close the voice, primarily the voice standard definition and high definition aspects of the network and not around the fixed wireless. So for a cell mobile technology, it's the ability to access voice or internet via portable or handheld devices. Users can move or be mobile and maintain a call or service as long as they have coverage from the provider, which has always been a challenge in not just Halliburton County, but throughout Eastern Ontario. And the technologies continue to evolve wire to support wireless five G equipment is now being rolled out by the telecoms. So we are starting to see five G, not just through this project, but other carriers as well. As where, sorry, the next slide, please. As where with the fixed wireless technologies, the broadband technologies. This is wireless connection is an internet connection delivered to, from a via radio service to a fixed location on your home. So there's typically a dish attached or a receiver attached to the side of the house. Or the cottage. It's amounted, there we go. It's mounted to the exterior of the building and connected to a modem. And this type of technology can only be used from that location. So you're not able to move around. So it's good for tech for fixed services. Next slide, please. So phase two, this is the project we're talking to today is the the cell gap project. So when I said twenty fifteen, just to keep mind in that in the timelines, this is a little expansion on that. So in two thousand and fourteen, the M Ps and the M P Ps approached the E O W C to look for help to try to close some of the gaps they're seeing as they're driving from their offices in Ottawa, Toronto, back to their constituencies. They weren't unable to stay connected to to their office or stay on call. So it was becoming an issue, a larger issue as we saw more mobile workforce in there. And I think there the real time usage of this really started to trigger an understanding of what probably local people already knew, but it helped to facilitate that. In two thousand and seventeen, the Eastern Ontario Regional Networks have been at a business case to the federal and provincial governments to fix that problem. In two thousand and nineteen, the both the federal and the provincial governments announced their support for that project. In two thousand and twenty, negotiations with the upper level of governments begin. And in September of two thousand and nineteen, we're, sorry, they started in September of two thousand and nineteen and were completed in May of two thousand and twenty. That same year in two thousand and twenty, we launched a request for proposal. With the R F P closing in September. Bell and Rogers both submitted to that. So we had two companies that provided response and those were the two. And in two thousand and twenty, we presented Rogers as a successful candidate on on that contract negotiation negotiations began. In March, two thousand and twenty-one, Rogers was officially announced as the successful bidder and with the contract assigned. And in two thousand and twenty-two, that first tower is is completed. So if we look at the advocacy piece on this, and this is one that I always amazes me is there really was six years of heavy lifting and a lot of work done by the E R N team, the E O W C, the local politicians to try to identify the issues in this network and create that business case. So we'd be able to be successful to find the funding. Next slide, please. So why is adding sites required? And this is, I'm sure as you guys are in your communities, you're hearing this often as there's already towers here. Why are we adding additional towers into you know, areas like Halliburton County throughout Eastern Ontario? One of the things that's changed over time is the, I guess, first of all, when Rogers looks at building their network, it's not a single tower. It's an integrated network. So each of these towers work off each other so that we're able to keep that consistency of a call. So to reduce drop calls. So it's an overall network build that's required. The other thing that's occurred over the years, though, is as we've introduced services like high definition or standard definition, the footprint coverage of those types of technologies, because they are so data intensive are not as great as the voice quality. So a voice packet is very small, can travel quite a long distance. But by introducing new technologies and new requirements, access to internets, email, video calls. More towers are required to be able to provide those types of services and the technologies required to support those. So we need that, those additional towers so that we have that continuity throughout the network and that is seamless for the users as they're on those calls or checking their emails. I don't think this is the one. So next slide, please. That's the one that moves. So our overall goals for the project, we have a target of ninety-nine percent coverage in Eastern Ontario region where people work, live, and travel on major roadways. So that they can make and receive phone calls. And we are confident that we will be able to meet that target. We have a ninety-five percent target in Eastern Ontario where people live, work, and travel on major roadways with standard definition. Service levels which can support email, web browsing, and social media services. So your basic connectivity. And we have an eighty-five percent target in those same areas. With high definition services where people can support, can do video conferencing, movie streaming, or other data intensive applications. And again, we are confident in these three targets that we will be able to achieve these. Slide please. So on the overview, and Lisa has spoken briefly to parts of this, the, you know, we're looking at three hundred and twelve existing tower sites will be upgraded to support L T phones as well as five G. To date, we have completed two hundred and ninety-seven of those sites. So we're making very good progress on our upgrades. Approximately two hundred and sixty new sites will be built throughout Eastern Ontario. Thirteen of these to date have been completed. We have approximately seventy-three sites, which will be co-located on existing tower sites. Our preference was or would always be to try to co-locate wherever possible to be able to minimize the number of towers to be built. However, due to a number of factors, whether it's the age of the towers, the type of network we're building, the location within the network, or other challenges that may be there. That's not always possible, but that is our our preference at first is to co-locate where possible. To date, we have completed twenty-eight of those seventy-three sites. We are under contract with the Ontario government to be completed our work by two thousand and twenty-five. And we will meet or exceed our project goals. The other one that's interesting in the E R N model. We do have service level agreements in place for five years to ensure that there's enough capacity maintained in the network with Rogers at the completion of this build. So it's not just a, you know, build it and and we're finished. We actually have a service level agreement in place that we manage and monitor every month. With Rogers to ensure that there's enough capacity where we have it today, but also that we future-proof that network. So as to the best of our forecasting abilities on where we think population growth may occur, we have enough capacity there to support those. Next slide, please. The benefits of the project. Of course, we're looking to close the coverage gaps to help people stay connected throughout Eastern Ontario. We're looking to increase capacity. A study I read recently, I was asked about the the upgrade from two and three G to five G. By the introduction of five G, that'll actually increase the capacity in network by twenty-three times what it would have been at three G. So just by the introduction of the technology will increase the capacity for a number of our areas right off the top. On top of that, we're looking to fiber backhaul those types of sites, the the new sites, which will also increase the amount of capacity for future, current and future growth. We're looking to improve public safety, so improve the number, the areas that are covered with nine one ones. So we're able to cover more of our rural areas. We're looking to improve municipal services, paramedics, public works, et cetera. So an example that we've often used on this is in the paramedic space. With time is, you know, our goal would be able with five G and H D is that you'll be able to start to do triage in the back of an ambulance on the way to the hospital and talk real time with the emergency room. So they know what's coming in and and measures can be taken to try to expedite any sort of concerns or care that's required. Public works, we see lots of opportunities in there to try to help find ways to find efficiencies in vehicle usage. Some areas are looking at the amount of sand or salt is put on a road can actually be remotely monitored. But you need the network there to be able to do so. That's part of our goal here is to help build that network. Improved economic development opportunities and tourism experience, as I mentioned earlier, you know, looking to bring people here to be able to stay longer and enjoy their stays longer, spend more money and time in the communities. And I feel that we have a good opportunity to continue to do that. And the new towers will allow for future deployment of fixed wireless and new technology rollouts. So we build these towers. It's not just for a ten-year period. These have a long life cycle on them. And we are building them with the future in mind of colocation, additional technologies. And we're in five G today. It won't be long till we're probably in six G. So we'll continue to see an evolution of technology, but the core structure of the tower and the process that is taken to get that put there. That will remain. So it'll be a matter of reutilizing those structures for future opportunities. Next slide, please. The funding details. So over three hundred million dollars of investment will be made in Eastern Ontario. That's before in-kind contribution and community benefits. So if we look at the split on here, the Ontario, the government of Ontario has contributed seventy-one million dollars to this project. The government of Canada has matched that with approximately seventy-one million dollars as well. The E O W C, as well as the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus have contributed just over ten million dollars to this project. And Rogers has made a minimum investment of a hundred and fifty million dollars. So it's a very large private sector investment to be made in Eastern Ontario. The county of Halliburton contributed four hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars in a lump sum payment and in return earned thirty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars in interest payments back to the county. So it was a not a bad investment at that time before the infrastructure was built. The R O I estimated for this area is about fifty to one to eighty to one, depending on the project completion. And that is a very, at this point, a very basic R O I study that we've done, just based on the number of towers, the amount of investment, the overall capital required to do that for the investment made by the county. So it is a healthy investment from an R O I and we expect to do when we we finish the project, we will do a more in-depth R O I study on that. But we wanted to give an idea of what that return investment might look like from our perspective as initial start. Next slide, please. So the regional and county view. So if we look at the towers upgrade, as mentioned before, we have three hundred and twelve that will be upgraded. Of those two hundred and ninety-nine have been completed. So we actually finished a couple more since the data was pulled. In Halliburton County directly, there's twenty-one towers that are slated to be upgraded from the three G, four G to the five G. To date, we've completed nineteen of those, so making very good progress in that. Tower builds across the territory. There's two hundred and sixty sites that will be built. Of those thirteen have been completed. In Halliburton County itself, we do have thirty-one towers planned, which I believe from a county perspective might be the largest number of towers to be invested. So good news is there's thirty-one towers coming. Bad news is there's quite a gap that we're trying to close. So it's taken a little bit of time to get to this point. We've recognized this and we're working to close that. So there is a large investment being made, though, in Halliburton County to try to close that gap. Co-locations, we have seventy-four that we're going across Eastern Ontario with, of which twenty-eight have been completed. So again, making good progress in the co-location space. For the county itself, we have four planned of which one is done. Land use authority. So again, two hundred and sixty land use authority requirements across Eastern Ontario, one hundred and fifty-nine or Eastern Ontario, sorry, one hundred and fifty-nine of those have been completed. And in Halliburton County itself, we have thirty-one that will be required and ten of those have been completed. And we would like to, you know, thank staff in Halliburton County. We appreciate and the elected officials, we appreciate it that sometimes it's not an easy job to be able to have the discussions around the land use. But staff has done a great job working with our teams and working with Rogers to try to ensure that we have the right questions being answered, the, you know, the, the the right answers available for the public when they're asked, and they're very timely to get back to us as well as to the public as much as they can with any sort of concerns to try to address those. It is a tough job and we appreciate that you're not always going to have the answer everybody wants to hear. All we can do is give the facts and that's what we're doing our best to try to provide to your staff and then in turn your staff to the public. So but we would like to thank them for that, the effort put into that. Next slide, please. Steps to construction. This is, we added this as we felt it was relevant as from the L U A, the time people hear that there might be a tower coming until it's actually built is not a quick process. You know, it can be anywhere between eighteen to twenty-four months. Hence why we feel that there's a little bit of pressure building, especially in the land acquisition areas. But if we go through the steps on this, the first step is always to find that property that meets the needs of the network. So when Rogers looks at their overall topography, they're looking to see where they need to place the towers so that they can interconnect and they can have the best coverage to where the residents and businesses where people are going to use the service, so where they live, where they travel. Those types of opportunities. That is probably one of the most difficult pieces of this whole process is to find a willing landlord who would be willing to site a tower on their property. Lot of concerns as far as impacts the neighbors. You know, what that might do there. So that's the very challenging piece of the job and and that staff that's out there working in the communities are working hard to try to find those and and meet the needs of the of the network requirements as well as the community. Once we found that property, they do negotiate a lease with the landlord. So there is a compensation model that would be put in place there. Once that's been negotiated and it's been approved. We conduct an archaeological assessment, so a stage one and stage two, and a natural heritage assessment of the proposed sites. So and I believe I have slides in this in a in a couple, but just to touch on that briefly, the duty to consult process was given the opportunity to E R N to manage throughout Eastern Ontario. So we do this for all new sites that we're going to be breaking ground on. So in Eastern Ontario, we have two hundred and sixty sites. Where we are doing archaeological assessments and natural heritage assessments, just to ensure that we're not going to disturb any traditional lands or sites. We've also gone through a very extensive mitigation process. And working with the indigenous communities to ensure that we understand species of risks where there may be moose or deer shedding areas, wintering impacts on the local lakes and ecosystems. So there's a very intensive process that we've gone through over the last eighteen months to be able to come to a position where we're comfortable working on that, but at the same time still have all of these archaeological assessments ongoing. Once we've approved that, we go through the land use authority with the municipalities. We've got approval there. We notify the province that the sites are ready to proceed. So to date, we have a hundred and fifty-three of our two hundred and sixty throughout Eastern Ontario that have been released to construction. And once we've had that, that site preparation order and material, et cetera, starts with the construction. So the other part that's critical to this is that through this entire process from start to end is the consultation with the indigenous communities and organizations is ongoing. So we are in regular communication with our indigenous communities that we work within. There are eighteen communities in Eastern Ontario that we consult with or we we communicate with, and we have agreements with two of those. Next slide, please. So just to expand on the duty to consult. So we have been delegated the duty to consult with the eighteen indigenous communities and organizations by the crown. We are dedicated to working closely with those communities and organizations to address concerns about the impact of the cell gap project on territorial and treaty rights. The U R N and the O W C strongly believe in the benefits of the project must extend to all communities, municipal and indigenous in Eastern Ontario. And we've completed archaeological and natural heritage assessments on a hundred and fifty-three new tower sites to date. We've been in more than a hundred and twenty meetings and phone calls with indigenous communities and organizations. And we developed training documents to assist staff in the field, which are also available to municipal staff if they wish to see it on our website. We have a a spot information available to the staff as well. It's been quite a bit of effort put in between ourselves and the communities we're working with to ensure that we have that accurately. Next page, please. How the municipalities play a role in this. Municipalities are responsible for land use authority, and that's a large undertaking for all new, new, new towers. Rogers Communication has completed the process in about half of the towers throughout Eastern Ontario, and we are continuing to work the municipalities. We've had some very good communication with local municipalities on feedback on the process, and there's been some challenges at time, and we've worked through that with that feedback. So if there is more to be shared, we appreciate that. It just helps us support the municipality, but also support Rogers through this process. As we said early, earlier, this might be, you know, part of the most difficult process is to find willing landlords, but also to go in front of the public and share that information and take their feedback, their constructive feedback in a positive manner. So we we do appreciate that if there's opportunities for us to work with our teams. After the L A U's approved, municipalities are key to moving the project forward by working with Rogers on Rogers on processing building applications in a timely fashion. Again, we've been very successful in Halliburton County. We appreciate the work of the staff to be able to move those projects forward. And we have created a resource document for use by the municipalities, and we are always available to assist if if required or if requested. Happy to drive anywhere. That's, we're welcome. So we do have a tower sighting guide, resource guide and a five G resource guide on our website at the ORN.ca slash tower sighting, and that'll be in the presentation as well. So if there are questions, there are some resources there to help, and we are also available to help if required. Next slide, please. So part of the the approval process is, yes, sites have been selected, but it is a federally regulated activity at this point still. So we thought it was important just to share the the I said, which is innovation, science, and economic development, their role in this process. But ultimately, I said, has the authority under the Radio Communications Act to approve each site on which radio apparatus, including towers may be located and to approve the erection of all mast towers and other antennas supporting structures. I said generally favors having the telecom service providers and the local public and land use authorities work together towards a solution. And takes each other's interest into consideration. And under I said procedures, if either the L A U or T S P believes, so they tell thinking I'm coming to the end of my, my time. I better speed up. Discussion of reach and impasse, that can be their formally requested departmental intervention. I better speed up um discussion of reach and impasse, that can be their formally requested departmental intervention concern and reasonable and relevant concern. Really what I said, though, is they're looking for the municipalities and the service providers to be able to to work out their concerns or issues if they are to a a reasonable agreement. On the, sorry, next slide, please, on the um public concerns, so as far as it goes, I said's position, and this is I said's position from their site. Concerns considered relevant. To a tower sighting include why the use of the existing tower is not possible, so co-location. Why is an alternate site not possible? What is the T S P doing to ensure that the tower is not accessible to the general public? How the T S P is trying to integrate the tower into the local surroundings, what options are available to satisfy aeronautical obstructions, marketing uh requirements of the site? And what are the steps the T S P took to ensure the compliance with the general regu- um requirements of this document? Including the Canadian Environmental Assessment Act and the Safety Code six, et cetera. Concerns that are not relevant. Include disputes with members of the public relating to the T S P's service, but unrelated to the tower itself. Potential effects the proposed tower system will have on property values and municipal taxes. And questions whether the Radio uh Communication Act. And broadcasting antenna system, Safety Code six, locally established bylaws and other legislation procedures. And processes are valid or should be reformed in some manner. And this is um and this is directly from my set, so this. Is often what you'll hear um when the uh discussions come up, especially around Safety Code six, um we we do take the I said, the Health Canada Safety Codes um position. Next slide, please. On the towers themselves, most will be sixty to ninety meters in height uh to be able to cover the maximum area for uh for our coverage. Both uh four G and five G will be immediately uh supported by those antennas. And by having those will uh allow for incremental capacity on sites and future proof the network for today and tomorrow. Next one, please, so the equipment on the towers themselves. So just for reference, um because you're not going up sixty or ninety meters to take a look at one of these things, nor should you want to. Um the antennas themselves are about the height of your door, so just for a reference size, uh in Roger's case, they put six of those on the top of each of those towers. The weight of those, each one's about the weight of your refrigerator. So just for reference, when we look at co-location or tower requirements. When they engineer those towers, they're going to engineer that for not just that, but for potential co-location, if a bell came in would be a similar sort of structure, so those are towers are are engineered very, very well for the maximum opportunities. They uh they are attached to the tower structure before it's lifted in place, so if it's a brand new site, it is done on the ground, because they don't want to have to winch your crane those up. But for the upgrades, they will get guys on the tower, people on the tower, and they will winch those things up to the top, or they will lift them by crane, depending what the uh the scenario is, so. It's not a small undertaking, even for the upgrades, although we're making great progress, it is a lot of effort to get those done. The next slide, please. Uh the initiatives for the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, so we are looking to complete eighty to eighty-five new towers and co-locations in our fiscal year. Most of the upgrades to the existing towers, the five V will be completed this year, so that's good news. Um we have a a new board um as of April, uh so we'd like to appreciate, I thank them for joining and supporting us. And Danison is uh part of our boards, we appreciate uh especially the new insight and and new ideas and new questions and making us think, so it's. It's been an interesting process for myself to go through, but it's uh it's nice to have uh new voices on the board as well. We are collaborating with the E O L C, so the Eastern Onta- uh Eastern Ontario Leadership Council. Uh as well as the O W C on affordable housing, so the seven and seven project, we are working with them on uh developing the business case and the business plan to be able to present and move that forward. We're working with the E O L C on the permitting system, so uh central, our permit central is the name of the system, where we are looking to try to. Introduce a more of a uniformity across Eastern Ontario for municipal consents, road occupancy permits, uh initially started as oversized loads for trucking, which uh but it's evolving, and we see more opportunities there. As we get to work closely with the municipalities. We are investing, are investigating the possibility of the uh public safety broadband network for the region. Uh we are hearing that where. Multiple counties are having similar challenges, where it's come to our attention, maybe there's an opportunity with our project to help try to support some of these opportunities. We are supporting Infrastructure Ontario on the ASAP Broadband Program, which for those who may not be aware is the. Ontario uh broadband program that is being rolled out throughout Eastern Ontario, while through cross Ontario. It's a four billion dollar program that's bringing fiber to the home in a lot of cases uh throughout Ontario, so a very aggressive project um. Which, from a municipal perspective, we see as having a large impact on the number of permits and permissions required to be able to do a massive volume of work. Um your T S Ps that will be coming in the areas will be looking to either co-locate on existing structure. Which has its challenges, because it has a very tight timeline, has to be completed by twenty twenty-five. So for those who have tried to co-locate on any hydro or bell asset, it's not uh easy. So we foresee that there'll be a lot of requests to vary, which will drive into the municipal space, so. We expect there to be a very large volume of permit requests coming to the municipalities for approvals, and to manage that is going to be a large undertaking. We're also working with the regional municipalities to uh to address some cybersecurity gaps, so we are working with the Eastern Ontario I T teams to help uh system put together a framework for cybersecurity as we move forward. So exciting and a very busy year for the Eastern Ontario Regional Network. And that's it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Um questions from council. Council Rayo.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask a as as a. Like a private citizen, um a lot of us, first off, really need. Improved, so it's no argument to that. But we also have challenges with broadband, and we also have challenges with television reception. And and like many others, that's done through a satellite as far as I'm concerned, because you can't get it any other way. With what we're doing here and how this is going to be, is is that going to be impacted, because at the moment. The the download and uploads are very, very slow. Anytime there's a storm, there's an interference, an electrical storm is total chaos. Um is any of that going to be addressed, or will it solve part of the problem? With when this project is completed.
Between this project and other broadband initiatives going on, uh it will help, I you know, again, I don't know if it's going to fix all of those challenges. Um but with the new tower sites, that'll put more capacity with more redundancy in the area, and so for storms, those types of things should reduce those impacts. T V um. It depends what the providers commit with this package, so as technology evolves, there may be opportunity there. As part of our initial scope, though, that would not be part of our scope, as far as the TV, um we are seeing locations uh. In where density is the opportunity, where we're starting to see five G plus, which is actually a data application, you can run TV and and those types of applications through that. Stream your movies and videos. Um so by building the network, we see that evolution already starting in some locations, and we're sure places like Halliburton County, it won't be in the first year or two, because we have to build the towers. But it is something we foresee as a part of the trigger of this project. From a capacity perspective, the additional towers and having not just Bell, but also now Rogers in the area, will allow for a competitive market. And also allow for choices and for those coming out of urban areas, uh it won't just ride on one network anymore, there'll be two networks now to help try to. To address some of those capacity challenges that we've seen in the past.
Other questions from council. Council Carter.
Sorry, yeah, let's go through a beginning here to uh to phrase the question properly, so. And one of the things that inherently happens here is that there's sort of a hierarchy of. Of requirements and needs, first of all, you know, voice and then text and email going all the way to your streaming of movies and games and and so on and so forth. The. Private uh enterprise. They basically sell. These services uh by volume, in other words, five G is better. For the companies because they can move more volume down, you know, you know, six people in the house all watching a different movie, that type, you know, that type of a situation. But. Here, you know, we're in that. That phase of. Trying to get the, you know, the the basics met. Um I live on twenty-one, which is halfway between here and Halliburton. And between my house and here, there's three areas that we'll all drop. A call, um you know, the other day, the deputy mayor and I were trying to have a conversation and. And she would drop or I would drop and, you know, and we were all within, you know, a couple of kilometers of Minden. Um so the. The second part of it is, is that five G. Tends to run on much higher frequencies than three G. But three G tends to give you a little bit more um distance theoretically. So I guess the the question is, is. You know, what are you guys trying to do to make sure that, you know, we have the coverage, the basic needs of our population back to. Phone and text and email that most of the people who are working around here and needing to contact suppliers or. Or customers or so on really need, and like, so how much? How much is being invested in making sure that that happens as opposed to being allowed, you know, to have five G? In the in the various centers so that a lot more volume can go through. So. Go ahead.
No, and and that's, that is a fair question, and it's a good question, um I guess I'd start by. I don't know if we can find three G technology anymore to put on towers from that perspect- the evolution as it has gone to five G, so when. E R N would have looked at the coverage requirements with Rogers in this case, and. That Bell in the in the business case, those were taken into consideration for our ninety-nine percent coverage is where those people work, live and and travel. Um so the introduction of thirty-one new towers is what felt. Is required to be able to meet those targets. So it's not just the five G data that we're worried about, because ours is actually the key. Reason for our project has been around the voice first. And the nine-one-one, so we're confident that we'll achieve that ninety-nine percent coverage. Through this project, based on the network that's being proposed to be built through Rogers. And it will be primarily voice first, the benefit of this network, I would say, is that the five G capacity comes with it. And technologies evolve to the point where you can provide both data services. As well as those voice quality, because they can actually slice those data networks if required. So we are confident that we'll be able to cover this when we're finished.
Is there any performance? Um measures that uh the supplier has to meet in order to?
Yes, we do have those, uh we have their our service level agreements, yes, L A's are in place for five years, and those are part of drop calls, um the ability to connect and make calls. Those are all measures that are in there for us to monitor and work through with our partner on that, to ensure that we are seeing those met.
Okay. Council Rayo.
Um I'm going to show my ignorance of the technology, if you don't mind. In some places, they have what you would call secondary booster stations. Whereby you come from the main tower, you can go to a secondary booster, and it it highlights for for peripheral people who are just on the outskirts. Is that going to be an option that would be either available? Or supplied in the program?
Based on what we've mapped out, we don't think that would be required, because our goal is to have those areas covered with the primary tower sites. So there could be relays as far as from the transport perspective through microwave systems. Uh but it shouldn't be required through this, but when we get close to the end, if there are still gaps, and we'll have to look at a at opportunities like that, there are. Just, you know, micro cells is something you may start to hear about, those are starting to be introduced in some urban areas to try to close those little fine gaps, but the coverage area on them is. Hundred meters, hundred and fifty meters, so when we're looking at a a vast area like Halliburton County. I'm not sure that's a a possible solution, but. Once we get into the, you know, the coverage is finished and we've done the final assessments, if we still see gaps like that, or we're still hearing gaps, and we'd like to have that fed back to us to see if we can find ways to close those. But our initial plan right now is that we should be able to cover all those areas, but you know, until you've actually got the network up and running and people using it, you. Theoretically are able to do it, and actually, when people are using this, where we need the feedback.
Other questions? I do have a couple myself, and and this is based on, you know, things that I've heard during, you know, but various discussions about the project. One of the things that I'm, I I know that you don't have any control over this, but one of the comments that that I've heard over and over again. Is is a concern about uh I said's determination that that they're, that they will not hear or listen to any arguments made about the impact on. Property values, and that seems to me something that is. Rather unfair, because I would suspect that there really is uh an impact on property values when there's a a tower located right next door. To a property, do you see any opportunity to have any impact on that, or, you know, any? Change in the future with respect to that?
We can take it back and. And identify it. I don't know that we would see much change in their position on that at this point. Now, maybe with the introduction of additional towers, maybe something moved, but I I don't see that as being. One of the ones that we would see easily moved.
I know that's a tough one. Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Uh through you, Madam Chair. On the flip side of that, we also get numerous calls from real estate agents. Are people looking to purchase homes? One of the first two questions they now are asked, do I have reliable? Broadband service, and do I have cell service at my home, so it can impact the other way if you're on the value of your home. If you don't have those services as well.
Good point. Um at the at the risk of of repeating myself, um another concern that's been raised quite a bit by the public has been. Um your inability to use Crown land, and and I wonder if you could speak to that, just to, you know, inform the public in a more general way.
Uh through you, Madam Chair. At this point in time, uh through our project, um E R N um is exempt, was made exempt from um a large environmental assessment. Um. From the federal provincial governments because um. Towers in the past, if they were being built, they were not required to have an environmental assessment. If we build on Crown land, um it will trigger an environmental assessment for the entire project, so for all two hundred and sixty tower sites. So we have agreed that we will not uh build on Crown land.
Thank you, um my other, uh another question that I've got is specific to to land use as well. One of the arguments that I've heard uh made has been uh basically, why can't uh local communities have more say about where a tower is located earlier in the pro- process? Now, I understand from the presentation that you've made the challenges associated with with finding and, you know, that. The getting the approvals that are needed for a piece of land and and have them suit, you know, the the reach that you're trying to get. Um can you just speak a little bit to why? That process couldn't start a little earlier, that might actually ease your process in the long run, you know, with with having conversations within communities of. Where they see. Uh pitfalls or or um benefits to certain locations, as opposed to coming to a community and saying, here's where we're going to put the tower.
Right, um so I guess the first step of that is the network integration, so we do have a very limited space as far as the way the network integrates to itself. Um typically, from the location, from the the. High-level planning perspective, there's typically about a two-kilometer radius from where that pin is dropped for the ultimate coverage. If you take out, you know, in Halliburton County, Crown land, um lots that aren't large enough, um lots that don't have power or were unable to service. It limits it down fairly quickly on where we may be able to go, and then to find a willing land tenant or landowner uh is a challenge with itself, so. Typically, due to the where the tower needs to be located, uh it limits it quite a bit already off the start, so. I understand the the, you know, the opportunity that would be there to be able to try to include the community sooner, but when we're, when we get to that point, uh we're down to very few options that meet the network requirements. Um our E A assessment perspective, non-crown. Um you know, we take into consideration some of the mitigation processes, how close we are to the water, we have concerns around that, that we need to be aware of, et cetera, so it does limit it quite a bit, so. From the time the Rogers agent would come to the community to be able to present a location, a lot of. Considerations have already been taken into to account, to be able to try to find the best location. And then it comes to the community for that approval, and we've had those where, you know, discussion has come out of it with other opportunities. Um. It could be a variety of reasons for those, but it. It's difficult to start to know where in the process to start all that, just because it is so limited at times where we can actually. Offer to put a tower.
Um finally, and I I know you spoke to this in your presentation about. About um that, you know, your your project being done in a manner that would prepare us for technology going forward. One of the arguments that I've heard are sort of, it's a kind of a dual argument that uh. Hey, well, you know, I mean, the technology has changed so quickly over the last ten years. How can we be assured that these towers are going to be necessary? For say the next ten years, like it. I think that the, the speed with which technology changes is, is just like it's, it's growing exponentially and, and how can we be sure that, that these towers will prepare us? For the long term. And if technology changed to the extent that. For some reason or other, the towers weren't needed, is there a long-term plan for? Remediation of, of tower sites?
So within the contract of the landlords, uh, if a site is deemed not required, there is a, there is a. Part of that contract for the remediation of all those sites. Uh, I don't know that we've got to the point where we thought about why a tower may not be required, whether it's through redundancy, et cetera. From the technology perspective, it is a fair point. We have seen the evolution of technology grow, you know, exponentially in the last few years. As I said earlier, you know. What twenty four years ago, we were working on nine point six kilobit dial-up modems. That's, you know, you'd have a second line in your house. Now we're talking about three gigabits of, of, uh, service as far as speed goes synchronous to at that point. We don't know where the technology is going to go, but we do have clauses in there that if for some reason, um, in ten years or fifteen years, uh, it wasn't required, there is an opportunity for that. But again, we don't know if it'll go. More satellite or there'll be more opportunity through the wireless through, uh, through these cellular type sites. But I believe at this point, you know, from what we see is the voice coverage will be required, uh, for the foreseeable future and those opportunities for mobile data. Uh, as a, as a service is going to continue to be there for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that, but I guess my next question would be related to my good buddy Elon Musk. And what he's been doing and, uh. Um, do you see anything that his crew doing as any kind of a challenge to what you're trying to accomplish? Or just, you just see them as another opportunity competitor choice?
We see it as another op- well, it is an opportunity, right? So we see it as a competitive choice that's available. It's a good service that they're providing now. But as users or more users get on that, we don't know what that will look like. Will there become latency issues? Will there be challenges and oversubscription? Uh, will there come a point where eventually they'll say enough satellites in the sky is enough and they'll maybe slow some of that down? Based on the plan we see today, we see them offset each other really well. Uh, for those who really are a high cost area that you just cannot provide a service to, whether through cellular or terrestrial, that is a good option. But again, where the technology is going to go, we don't know. And, and how many satellites we're going to be allowed to put in the sky and what that's going to look like. Um, you know, there's already some debates going on in other parts of the world about the impacts of satellites in the sky on, on. Indigenous rights, on spectrum, on, so we're not sure where that's going to go yet. But for now, we see it as a. As a good way to supplement what we're already working on.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd really like to thank you for, for coming to Halliburton County and, and, and enjoying the most beautiful place in Eastern Ontario. Uh, and for the information you've given us, it's been most helpful and, uh, you know, one thing that I, I look forward to being able to do for people who have questions. You know, to be able to tune in and, and, uh, you know, view. A recording of the meeting and hopefully it will, it will be helpful for, for everyone. So good luck with the rest of your work and thanks once again for your presentation. Uh, could I have a mover in a second or to receive the delegation, Councilor Carter and Shell?
Moved by Counselor Carter, seconded by Counselor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information, the delegation from. Representatives from the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, providing updates on the cell gap project within Halliburton County.
All in favor? That's carried. Um, we do have another delegation, which I think we'll, uh, go through before we have a break. Uh, we have a Mr. Phil Hartnett. Who wishes to speak to us about, uh. The municipal accommodation tax and short-term rentals. Good morning, Mr. Hartnett.
Good morning. Good morning, Council. Thank you for.
That's so, that's so that the public, the, who are listening can hear you as.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, I see Murray there. Um, first of all, thank you for making the time and thank you for, uh, what you do. In terms of your serving the community. Thank you. So by way of introduction, um. My name is Phil Harknett. Uh, been a resident or property owner here in Halliburton since the eighties. My wife and I. Purchased a vacant piece of land on. Lake here and build our own place and, um. Loved our time here. Uh, our kids played sports in Halliburton. Worked as teenagers. I became involved with, um. The Residents Association. And worked with Murray a little bit on North Shore Development, took over the Residents Association on the Squawby Area Residents Association.
I'm sorry, sir. I just wonder if you could speak into the mic or pull the mic a little bit closer to you. Thank you.
There we go. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so my topic today is, um, the taxing and regulating. The business of short-term rentals. And let's be clear, it is a business. The, the model of Airbnbs as we know was originally an air mattress. In somebody's home in San Francisco. That's not what we have here in Halliburton County today. What we have here. Is second homes that people have, uh, invested as a business. And it's time this, this county. Got down to, uh, taxing and regulating these businesses. Um, and what do we need? In my opinion, we need four things. We need to inspect. We need to license. We need to regulate. And we need to tax. So to break this down, um, inspect. This needs to. You know, the county, this doesn't need to be a loss leader. This could be a. Something that generates revenue. I better check the time because I know I'm allowed fifteen minutes. Um, you know, uh, many municipalities are already doing this, as you know. Uh, you start with an online pre-approval that you charge. There's a site visit where, uh, staff would match. What's offered online to the septic approval, it's parking, et cetera. And also I think something that gets lost here is. The safety of these people that come to visit. Um, our county. When there's no inspection and, uh, there's many people getting crammed into these places. What would happen if there's, God forbid, um. An event where people get hurt and there hasn't been proper inspection in terms of. Smoke detectors, egress, et cetera. I think that's something that. Needs to be on our radar. So the next point, license. Um, again, it's something that. A good amount of money should be charged and this is an annual fee that generates revenue and pays for staffing. The regulation. As we know, our municipalities to the north and west, Lake of Bays and to the south, Water Lakes have this. And they use third-party monitoring. They monitor the listings on all platforms. They provide a twenty-four, seven-hour hotline. For problems that we all know exist with these short-term rentals. Um, along with that, you get demerit points and delisting for. Uh, violations of existing, um, codes within the county. And also upon regulation, we need to look at limiting numbers in certain areas. How much is enough? You know, uh, my wife and I have retired to, um. We live here year-round now in a small lake in Daisart. And on our lake of forty-five properties, we have ten plus that are Airbnbs. That's twenty percent. That's how much is enough, you know? Yeah, um, many municipalities limit within certain areas. And then the third, uh, the fourth point is to tax. Right? This, so. Uh, these business owners are supposed to self-register for H S T. Um, and if they don't, uh, you know, anything that. Uh, any rental under thirty days is supposed to be registered for H S T. I know that's not a county problem. But what the county should do, I believe, is enact a municipal accommodation tax. Many, many municipalities across Canada and Ontario. Levy of four percent municipal accommodation tax. Toronto is six percent. Um, the former deputy of Daisart, Pat Kennedy, had this file last year and he. He mentioned in media that, um, he thought within the county there'd be two hundred properties. Well, I'd say, based on conversations with all our friends up here and, and adjoining lakes. You know, that twenty percent figure that we have is not out of line for lakefront. So I believe there's a lot more than two hundred properties within. Halliburton County that we pay in a municipal accommodation tax. The final thing on taxing is property tax. These businesses are being run in areas zoned S R two seasonal residential. So. How fair is that to businesses that, that is own business and they pay? Uh, a corresponding higher amount of property tax. This just isn't right. It's not the right thing to, to let go. So what effects generally does this have? Within our community on long-term rentals and housing prices? This. Uh, takes properties out of. The, the pool for long-term rentals, right? And this affects our local businesses because as we all know, one of the big problems for them is getting staffing and if there's not the housing. Because what's happened is gone to short-term rentals. And housing prices were just another thing that adds pressure that takes this stock out of the. What's available and pushes it up. And you know, if you talk to local contractors and their businesses, they all know this. They know this is a problem. Now the myths around short-term rentals, right? We have the media on this. We have TV shows that. Show how, how great it is. We can take the cottage in Halliburton and we can fix it up. We can add extra. Um, bunk, you know, things in the bunky and, and, and look at the rental income. They never talk about. Oh, well, is the septic big enough or is there taxing and licensing? No, that doesn't happen. And the same in print. We have the, the Scottish guys doing a, a spread on, oh, we made this bunky look great and added all this extra accommodation. It's not, it's just not right. And. So. And the other thing we hear about is, oh, it's so great for local business. Well. We live now. Lovely between two Airbnbs. And most of the time it's a three-day, two-night. And these people show up, they don't leave, they bring their stuff with them. Right? So this is a little bit of a myth here that we have. So who does benefit? On these short-term rentals? Well, obviously the owners, investors, they do. There's a corporation in California that benefits. Cleaners. Yes, the cleaners are local. And of course the realtors love it because it bumps up the price and, and it's good for them. Uh. Last year you had a gentleman here that made a presentation. And he implored you. Not to use a big stick for a small program, uh, small problem. Well, it's not a small problem. And, you know, he said that, oh, he only rents his place two weeks a year and. Why make, uh, uh, regulations? Well. To me, that's kind of. Someone who's protesting a little too much. Because if you're only renting two weeks a year, why do you need to use? Uh, pay money to put it on Airbnb. It doesn't kind of add up, but anyway. So. In conclusion. What do we have here in Halliburton County? We don't have anything. Nothing. Um, as I said. Lake of Bays, there's many municipalities. The county doesn't need to reinvent the wheel here. We just need to talk to other municipalities, how's this done? Let's get it done. You know, and I'm not here to say no to all S T Rs, even though I could and, and go on about what's right. Um. But this just isn't right. You know, these people who come here and invest in this, it's like they're laughing at us. There's no. There's no downside for them. There's nothing, there's no skin in the game. And. Taxing and regulating is just the right thing to do. And. I'm asking you guys not to kick this down the road. Not to another council in another two years. It's time. Let's get this done. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Um, a couple of comments before I go to questions because you, you are in many ways speaking to the converted. We, this has been something that we've been struggling with and working hard on. We recognize and, and would like to have it in place now. There have been some challenges associated with the discussions we've been having. Um, and we're hoping to resolve those. Very soon. I, I'd like to have them resolved today. Um, whether that's possible or not, I, I, I don't know for sure. We all recognize the impact that short-term rentals do have on, on housing. And the housing challenge that we've got in Halliburton County and. And that's, that's something that we need to work on and at a variety of levels. Uh, just for your information, you did talk about the municipal accommodation tax. And that's something that will be discussed. In fact, uh, probably one of the items that will be on, on our discussion today. But it can only be done at the lower tier. It cannot be done at the county level. So that's. Where some of the arguments come into place about who's going to take on responsibility and will it be at the county level at the lower tier or combination thereof? Um, that's one of the deciding factors. You're absolutely right when it comes to the number of short-term rentals that are. Estimated to be in the county. I think we've had estimates anywhere between thirteen and fifteen hundred of them. Um, so there are an awful lot of them here and you know, that. That again, has an impact on available housing. There have been arguments made, uh, for, uh. Dealing with this through property taxes. Most of the recommendations that have come to us is that that's not the direction to go, although. Uh, the MAT tax is definitely something that, that we can look at. You know, and, and finally, you know, it's, it's finding that balance of lifestyle for folks like yourself who want to come and enjoy. Life here in Halliburton County and the peace and tranquility and everything that comes with Halliburton County. And the fact that there is a benefit to our economy, where's the balance? Where's the line? Um, so you know, these are some of the things that we're struggling with. Um, and, and hoping to resolve very quickly. Uh, we, we definitely want to regulate them. Uh, that's something that we all want to do. But I would, uh, open the floor up to questions or comments from council. Questions? Well, I, you know, having, uh, not hearing any questions, I'd like to thank you for your, your passion on this subject and for coming to us and speaking to us about your concerns.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening.
Could I have a mover in a second or to receive this delegation, please? Counselors Carter and Burton.
Moved by Counselor Carter, seconded by Counselor Burton. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information, the delegation from Phil Harknett regarding short-term rentals within Halliburton County.
All in favor? That's carried. I think we'll take a short ten-minute break and, um. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of reports and recommendations from the committee of the whole. Are there? Any questions about that report? Could have a mover in a second or then to approve the recommendations, Counselors Ryan and Carter?
Moved by Counselor Ryle, seconded by Counselor Carter. Be it resolved that the recommendations from the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the Whole be adopted by Halliburton County Council.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next are the approval and reports and recommendations from the Joint Accessibility Committee. I'm speaking to that.
Uh, sure. So, uh, a, a number of years ago, it seems, uh, it seems like a lifetime now, but pre-COVID. Uh, our accessibility advisory committee had set aside, um, had, had worked on a plan to, uh, incorporate, uh, alternative. Uh, accessible communication boards throughout the county. Uh, the idea was to start with a. One park in each of the local municipalities and then expand that program to include, uh, libraries and long-term care homes. Council has been setting aside ten thousand dollars a year for, for this work. Um, and, uh, the, the municipality of Daisart at all is the first one who is doing a. Um, and uh the the municipality of Daisart at all is the first one who is doing a uh park upgrade and so they are. Hoping to incorporate an an AAC board in Headlake Park. And um and so we are requesting that twenty five hundred dollars uh be allocated to Daisart to assist in funding that board. Uh, that money, as I say, there's almost thirty thousand dollars in reserves for this program. And and so that money is certainly there. We just need a resolution to have it uh approved to or to be allocated to Daisart.
I'm glad to hear the the background in that because I did find myself wondering why. This is the first time I've actually seen us. Dedicate funding to some recommendations. Are there any questions about the recommendations that are being made? They could have a mover in a second or then to approve the recommendations. Councillor Ryle, councillor Dayu.
Moved by councillor Ryle, seconded by councillor Dayu. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the approved minutes from the April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the County Joint Accessibility Committee. And further that the recommendation from the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting be adopted by Halliburton County Council.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next up is the uh Planning Department's update.
My Mr. Stone?
Good morning. Adam Morton to the rest of council. Thank you. Uh, the report that's before you is the standard report uh that planning gives. Uh, just a few highlights for council. Uh, we uh issued final approval on a subdivision in Algonquin Highlands. Uh, this week and sent the plans up for registration to the registry office in Ottawa. Uh, we are with the floodplain mapping project. We've finished our first phase of the new project. And so hopefully in the next month or so, we'll submit our first invoice to the province and get some money reimbursed for that. Uh, the next deliberables will happen in the fall with much of the modeling data. Uh, to be actually put into that model and presented to the province. So that's something that we'll keep our eye on with our. Our conservation authority partners in that regard. Uh, with climate change, uh, the the food cycler program has had its second and final release of all its units. So there's just a few stragglers left over. Uh, sitting in the office to be uh picked up. So that was a success. Uh, with regards to um. Uh, the other big thing that I think can bring to uh council's attention is the. Uh, development charges study in particular to the growth uh projections. So I've seen a draft of their findings for their growth projections. And uh what they're going to do over the next month or so is meet. Uh individually with the local municipalities just to discuss their findings and to look at uh. Uh, the growth projections in a more uh detailed uh. Uh municipal uh assignment of those numbers. Uh, so your your senior staff will. Uh, will be contacted shortly by the consultant in that regard. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the planning department's update? Councillor Ral?
I just want to, in relation to the development charges. I I would assume we're going to be looking at that as a twenty twenty-four project investigated in twenty twenty-three. And then and then implemented or or further than defined in twenty twenty-four. Does that sound right?
Yes, Madam Warren, to rest of council, that is correct.
Any other questions on the planning update? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive it? Councillor Dayu and councillor Carter?
Moved by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor Carter. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the planning report PLN dash forty-one dash twenty twenty-three. Entitled Planning Department Updates for June two thousand twenty-three for information.
All in favor? That's carried. And next is the uh much anticipated discussion about short term rentals. Um, I just, I I really and truly do hope that um that we can land somewhere today. Um, I think we've got a bit of new information that uh before us that might change our thinking a little bit. Um, I would ask that because we do have quite a bit to discuss. Um, that we try and be as succinct as we can and and as decisive as we can as well. Um, so having said that, over to you, Mr. Stone.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warren, rest uh to rest of council. So uh what council has before for you is a rather fulsome report. Um, and really, it's a uh, the report is sort of been founded on. Uh, the study that took approximately a year with the consultant. And as a result of uh their efforts, uh council was presented with two bylaws. Uh, the first being a registration bylaw and the second being the actual licensing bylaw uh for short term rentals. And uh, once uh council received that, then um. Uh, you tasked a solicitor to actually review those uh bylaws further and uh make uh. Answer some uh legal questions. So there was two uh, two uh legal opinions uh offered to uh county council in regards to. Uh, their questions around the whole programming, uh program of licensing. Um, uh, short term rentals, but also just the sort of the mechanics within those bylaws. And so. Uh, what I've tried to do in the in the report is sort of summarize the best my ability. Uh, 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 council's conversations around this subject, but also the lawyer's. Uh, opinions and some of his advice uh with regards to how the uh bylaws uh should be done. So with that, uh, in the first per portion of the report. Uh, what I tried to do is we had a special, uh, I should say, council held a special council meeting to discuss the. Uh, licensing and short term rentals. And what I tried to do in the first part of the report is to highlight some of the. Sort of questions that were raised and. I was asked to provide my rec and my best recommendation uh uh to those questions. So that's what I've tried to do. But certainly, uh, 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 are I'm available to sort of. Explore my thinking on that further. Should council have any questions with my answers? And then um, uh, I certainly will uh. Take the opportunities to look at the two bylaws in particular and and show how they've been clarified or refined. And I also will introduce a couple of new uh documents that uh sort of are associated with the bylaws themselves. So with regards to the questions of council, the few things that I want to highlight is that um. There was some talk about whether or not we should allow for short term rentals uh in uh accessory. Buildings, accessory dwelling units.
I wonder if I could just interrupt you for just a second. Um, because there are, there's a lot of of things that, you know, we're sort of looking for yes, no, or places to land on some of this. I'm just wondering if there might be a be some benefit to you reviewing the third part, the opportunity for third party implementation. And how that works, because I do see that if we were to decide to go in that direction, that some of the. Questions are uh e- e- the the responses would be different if we're looking positively at going in that direction. Some of the points that you've raised in in, you know, in the in the body of your discussion. Might not be as relevant or would be slightly different. So um, what's council's thought about that that might be a a good approach to take to hear about that first? And and then go to, you know, your individual sections and you'll know whether we need to uh land there or not. And and just before you start. Um, I'd just like to welcome the uh, the two CAOs, or CEO and acting CEO. Uh, from Minden and Algonquin Highlands. Welcome. And you know, by all means, if you. If you hear something that you really think is relevant to our discussion during the course of our of our question and answer period, please raise your hand and and I'll acknowledge you. So go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. With that, we'll uh divert my attention and discussion to the last page of the report. So. Uh, just uh by way of background, um. Uh, when we, uh, when council initiated uh. Um, in- initiated the study, there was uh, there was a. A number of municipalities already engaged in regulating short term rentals. Uh, much of uh the history behind regulations. Uh, for these businesses actually were uh initiated by municipalities, but since then, there's been. Uh, a number of third party uh services arising. Um, uh, to help assist municipalities in in rolling out the program and regulating the program. So. Uh, on the third page, there is a sort of a uh, a bit of a discussion on that and it it sort of uh highlights what the. Um, the services that can be utilized by municipalities to do that. And I've ca- categorized them as a monitoring type service. So um. These types of services actually work in partnership with uh municipal staff. Insofar as they will sort of, if you want to call it the front end uh implementation of. Uh, licensing by law will be tasked with the monitoring service. And what they'll do is they'll take the bylaw that's approved by the municipality and. Um, they'll use their uh web screening uh software to actually. Pinpoints and it's fairly accurate pinpoint where where the short term rental operators are based on their. Uh, ad campaigns and the various. Um, uh, agencies that offer uh offer the service, the rental service for them. And so. Uh, there was some talk about how many initially, how many um. Short term rentals were happening in the county and certainly uh the most recent uh. Uh, information that we're getting that that is closer to fifteen hundred. So what they would do in regards to, uh, they would take on the burden of. Actually engaging all the operatives that they can find uh on the web uh and. Uh, engage them by telling uh those operators that uh short term rentals are now licensed within. Within a given municipality within the county and you have. Uh, depending on what is decided on in terms of the actual implementation. Date of the license by law will work in advance of that date to uh solicit a response for those operators. And hopefully get them uh activating uh the process of getting a license. Uh, and uh going through the process to actually legitimately. Operate based on the rules, uh, rules and regulations that are set out by the municipalities through their bylaw. And it's uh, from what I understand, it's very automated. Uh, so if they have, uh, you know, a thousand. Uh, a thousand operators, they'll know down to the the address of where they're located. And they'll be able to send out form letters, more or less, indicating here's, here's the. License or regi- regime in place and this is what you need in terms of filling out applications and so on and so forth. They'll actually send out, uh, if I I'm correct on this, they'll send out uh. Electronic forms, uh, so fillable forms for uh for your uh. For the license and that'll be a uh enable the operators uh to willingly. Uh, submit their documentation that they need to 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 register their operation. They also have uh performance clauses and I've got a couple of them here. That uh again will be sent out and required by the operators to. To sign. So they have a licensing code of conduct, for example. And some of the other things that are included in the bylaws that we've got would be verification of your inspections. So. Uh, code compliance with uh the Ontario Building Code, uh fire inspections, uh the requirements for. Uh, smoke detectors uh and and so on, your septic system performance. And also uh a part of that monitoring process will include if there's restriction on number of bedrooms. Or tie that uh the oper- uh, the operation to septic system performance. They'll monitor that for you and determine whether. A licensee is. Can qualify for a license and then as as the program is underway. Uh, they'll actually monitor that from a year to year basis, depending on how long your licenses are for. And um. It uh it really from a a monitoring perspective takes the burden of responsibility off of municipal staff. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't take them o- out of the administration side of things. So. For example, if they were to say, oh, while we have a an operator that uh has defunct on certain things. That that would uh uh be an electronic uh signal uh in their surveillance to. Uh, send out a a form email to municipal staff, your bylaw enforcement. Or your your building department staff to say, we've got, we've got an operator who's offside on the regulations. You need to do your follow up inspection. On that. So uh it really, when I say it's a monitoring, it's actually a, it it's, it serves as a partnership between. Uh, you know, what they do, the service that they provide and uh and partners uh really nicely with. With mi- municipal staff functions. So your inspection services and your bylaw enforcement services. So.
Go ahead. If I could just add that, um, I did have a conversation with the CAO at the City of Coortha Lakes about the program that they are proposing to implement. Which will not take place or not that become effective until January. But there there is work happening in the meantime, but it won't be finalized until January. But the. They have about half, uh, they they anticipate that they have about half the number of short term rentals that we have in Halliburton County. They are using this third party uh service provider. But supplementing that with one uh municipal law enforcement officer and two um staff who would undertake some of the inspection work that would be required on an ongoing basis. So even if. There's a self attestation uh component to this at the beginning, saying, yes, we meet all the criteria. There would be, there would be a requirement to inspect on an ongoing basis, a percentage of similar to you, you uh, the programs you have in the local municipalities with respect to uh septic systems. So. I think if if you, if you think about that, just in terms of of staff resources. Um, the City of Coortha Lakes is proposing to use this third party, but also uh supplement that with three staff. And they think that they have about six hundred from my read of their reports. So.
So the the process of self attestation would reduce the burden and the and the the rush of of requirement for inspections right away with and and the fact that. That any anyone who wanted to have a short term rental would have to wait until their inspections were completed.
That it would avoid that. So they could actually continue to operate. As a licensed operator, saying that they were, they meet all the requirements that we've established. And then we would inspect as we could. Um, we should have an effective across the county, whether it's done at the county or whether it's done locally. There should be an effective inspection program. Um, it's not that you could just ignore these forever, but um. Uh, almost like an audit process as opposed to every, you know, all of a sudden having to go out there and inspect thirteen hundred properties.
So it's my understanding that the four CAOs um. Had a heard a presentation uh from a third party um provider and it was, it was very well received.
Uh, yeah, I would say that. Um, the uh, it was, it was really well received and and um. You know, I I'm reluctant. We we did see pricing. I'm reluctant to share that pricing just because we're not sure if we need to go through a competitive process for this at at this time. So. Um, but I would say that uh. And we've added a a line in the in the report that it is significantly less than than uh. Then the 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 cost for the service would be significantly less than the fees generated from the licensing program. We would still, uh, the the remaining fees would fund things like the administrative support, the inspection, the. The bylaw enforcement, other things, even some education. Uh, it would, it would. There would still be expenses to be offset uh surrounding the program, but but it would be significantly less uh to hire this this third party. Uh, then then the fees would be generated. So the the uh. With respect to the, I I know I'm stepping ahead a little, but um the. We would, we're having some conversation whether we could sole source this. We we really are not aware of any other company that provides this this service. Um, which also includes a twenty-four seven hotline. So if at two AM, someone is, you know. Get the, a neighbor is experiencing a problem with another neighbor having a large party or something like that. They would have, they would be able to call that hotline. If there's a responsible person. That person would be contacted. They would have to respond within the hour. Um, if that didn't happen, they could make us aware of that. Um, but either way, your bylaw enforcement staff would be aware of it. Um, and they could follow up. Um, but either way, your bylaw enforcement staff would be aware of it um and they could follow up uh at a at a later date. Um, but we're not, we're not aware of anyone that provides that scope of service. At so we're having a conversation about whether we would bring recommendations forward either here or at your local municipalities about uh single sourcing this. Um, but that would certainly expedite the process. But if that's not possible and and we we, you know, after we review our procurement bylaws, we decide or we think it's appropriate that there be a a competitive process, we could do a request for information, which is a two or three week process where we could put it out to the marketplace and say, if anyone can provide this scope of service and define that service, uh please get back to us and let us know. And and then that would, um if only one company, and we really do think there's only one company, if only one company uh responded to that, then we could be in a position to to move forward very quickly. They uh they would take eight to twelve weeks, we understand it, to actually mine the data from all the short term rental websites. Uh compare that to our information so we can identify the properties. And at that point, uh using Esri, they could, uh which is our G I S software, um which we already license, then we would be in a position to send out letters saying, hey, the county of Halliburton or the local municipalities have passed the following bylaw. You need to uh apply for a license and meet these criteria within a certain period of time. And and uh those letters would be able to go mid fall, early fall. Um, so it could happen very, very quickly once the bylaws are passed. And uh and it would only be as as uh the director has indicated, it may not be necessary to do the registration process. The intent of that was to figure out the extent of our problem and go through sort of an inspection protocol. It may not be necessary to do that. We could go right to passing the licensing by law. Um, and uh and the registration process could happen between now and January.
I believe that councillor Fury has a question.
Yeah, I certainly like this approach, and I I think the um it's going to take a a tremendous load off off uh local staff here. Uh, but one thing I still don't understand, can we not put, other areas are doing it. Can we not put some onus on the property owner to say that he's complied? Like, I I I know that somebody said, well, we got liability. Well, we have liability anyway. If you uh inspected a a deck and somebody fell off it, guess what? They're going to sue the municipality. They're not going to sue the rental company. So I I don't, I don't know that there's a combination here that will take a lot of the work off the townships, a lot of the inspections. And if somebody's prepared to sign an oath or a le- a letter, a statement, that they've complied with all the conditions we've laid out, that's on them as much as it is on us. And uh if we want to spot check them, if there's if there's problems, I I'm all in favor of that. This is, this is a tremendous load off uh municipality. So I I'd like to pursue this uh further. I I think it's got a lot of possibility.
I think that's what we're proposing is a self attestation that says, here's the criteria you need to meet. And they sign an oath that they are meeting tho- those criteria.
Exactly.
And yeah, and then once that um, once the program is up and running, then we could do almost an audit. And I I do think it should be an effective audit, not just, you know, we'll do them once every twenty years or something like that. I think it should be more robust than that, but you wouldn't need to do them all in one year. You could do them over a period of four years or five years.
Yeah, same as septic inspections.
Exactly.
Uh thoughts uh about this this particular direction that we might go in uh councillor Royal and then councillor Carter?
Uh, I think it's, I think it's, we we need to explore this because I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, as far as the inspections are concerned, we could probably tie those into demerit point systems too, in the sense that you want to earn an inspection, just do it wrong. And 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 we will make sure that you're inspected. Uh, and 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 that's kind of an incentive to be compliant is that if you get a demerit point, you may or may not be ins- it's it'll be at our discretion, but you could, you could very well get uh get inspected. I I I think I think that's a great way of kind of verifiable trust, I think. If you don't want to follow the rules, we'll we'll spot check to make sure you do.
Councillor Carter.
Yeah, I I totally agree with councillor Ferry and with um Mr. Rutter has said, the the idea of somebody making an attestation that uh they they need all the requirements, then removes from us the need to do the registration. Um, and we could go directly to the licensing. Uh, the one thing that, you know, I feel that I absolutely have to insist upon is that no taxpayer dollars should go into paying for this program. This program should be totally funded by those who are the short term rental folks. So whatever the cost of whether, you know, a private service or so on. And so that's, you know, why I would have some questions about what are licensing fees and how that structure is set up. But I think that 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 would be the one thing that, you know, I would absolutely hold firm upon that that be one of the 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 points of the or the the basis for the program is that those who are using this program pay for it. And you know, if people are going to have to have, you know, fire inspections or whatever, as you know, as a follow up or as a regular thing or septic inspections, they pay for those. That not, that does not come back to the municipality or the or the county.
Well, I want one thing that I do like as well is that this takes away the the concern that we had about a delay in in someone who's got an existing operation and having to wait um that resolves that uh comment.
I again, I'll I'll just give rough numbers so that to almost to put your mind at ease as opposed to giving a a specific business plan. But if if thirteen hundred was our number and we had it now, depending on your license fee structure, this may, this is just very rough numbers. So if thirteen hundred short term rentals were active in the county and there were uh and our fee was five hundred dollars, that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. The third party, the pricing we saw was so, you know, south of one hundred thousand. So that would leave, you know, a significant amount of money left. However, you choose to administer it, whether it's local or at the county, there's a significant amount of money left to pay the other fees associated with inspection, administration and other things. And that does not include a mat tax, which is another conversation for later down the way.
Councillor Fury.
Well, I I don't know that we need to put the map tax down the road. I I uh like the fact that people coming in here pay. And uh I don't know that it is an opportunity to do it at the same time. We already have the the people that are renting, so we know the people that need to be taxed. So uh to me, it's it's kind of a no brainer. But but the other thing I got questioning is, how big is this firm? Like, they're taking off municipalities all over the place, like uh and what do they do about parking? How do they know if there's two car parking or five, based on the the survey, I guess? The trust of survey. Okay.
The the parking, I I think, would be almost be addressed through complaint because but what they can do is they actually monitor the listing. So if it says in the listing that they can, they can accommodate up to ten, then they would know, we've set by a rule that says you have to have this many uh bedrooms for that service, and they actually mine the data to compare those data points. Um, yeah, so they would do that. And we would actually um with our with our G I S mapping, we would be able to look at the property as would our local staff. And you would be able to see how much room is there for parking. Um, but certainly, um if we're getting complaints about parking on roadways or other things, that's something that we could work on very quickly. And and bylaw staff could report.
Yeah, they could go, yeah. So is everybody in on the accommodation tax or not, or what's the thoughts on that?
Um, I would look to comments from other members of council on that. I I, you know, I, to me, that's that's maybe putting the cart before the horse. First, we need to decide, you know, who's going to be responsible for what.
Totally, I agree.
You know, I mean, before we were looking at at, we need a registration license or bylaw and a licensing bylaw. If we decided that we're going to go with a a third party uh company, we wouldn't need to do the uh the registration. So that kind of changes the balance a little bit.
It it does.
Um. I'm glad you brought up the parking issue because there's a short term rental on Highway thirty five. And there must have been ten cars parked on the property and at four on the high, right on the highway. And it's just like, okay.
Yeah.
That's a problem right to begin with. Uh, we'll start with councillor Burton.
I I forget where your question was, but I certainly support the third party. And I I I do believe it's the right uh right direction for us to go. Uh, as far as the tax, yes, uh supported a hundred percent. Um, parking has uh has been an issue all the way through for me that I uh I I'm adamant that we are going to be able to get our uh first responders, different people into these places and not. I've been, I I guess years ago in the fire department, I have found that uh it has been a bit of a burden for us to get the equipment in to uh to some of the rentals. But uh parking, like I said, is is big to me and I I I'm not a hundred percent sure how we're going to address it properly.
Um, councillor McCackney.
Yeah, I'm definitely in agreement to the third party and also the tax. And the parking, I think, is just something that is going to be an ongoing um problem because uh people are going to try to, you know, somebody's going to come up with two with two cars when they should have only one. And the guy didn't realize it was rented the place or. So um I just think that when we do uh have these complaints that, you know, say it'll be monitored and um that person will be uh losing a lot of points. And uh the that's where we started the punishment. Uh, parking is definitely an issue like, but uh uh councillor Burton just brought up about our our uh services trying to get in there, whether it's the fire department or the E M S that is by far one of the most important issues in these these rental units. If uh like you're talking about that place on High Highway thirty five, they they couldn't get in there. That's that's pretty sad. So I think it, we 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 would just set uh set a standard that if you're going to break the parking of our bylaws, that you're going to be punished and maybe you'll you'll lose your license.
Right. If I could, just so the the bylaw that uh the director has uh uh in- included with his staff report says that a um a site plan drawn to scale and fully dimensioned for of the short term rental premises. Correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, but he he in this regard, parking management plan um for a minimum number of spaces required, the zoning bylaw and this bylaw, which is ev- whichever is greater, the parking management plan layout must show how parking spaces are to be laid out to ensure easy access to short term rental for renters. Um, I E required spaces per rental unit. The P M P is to show how renters get access to the short term rental parking area and how only vehicles and trailers associated with the short term rental would be permitted in the short term rental parking area. So I believe the parking is addressed in the bylaw. And again, if there are complaints, they could be dealt with and at as councillor McCackney has said with through the demand point system.
Councillor Royal.
I think the third party is is the way to go uh with regards to the mat tax. I think the mat tax is something that we're going to need to investigate, but I think the timing on it is not correct at this point. We need to know what we're doing and how we're going to get there before we decide how we're going to tax it. And and so I think that once we get the 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 licensing sorted out and we get that done, we find out exactly how many people we're dealing with, the types of rentals that we have. And I think the next phase, which would be shortly thereafter, would be to develop and implement a mat tax. So I'm not against the mat tax. I just don't think it should happen at the same time as 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 this particular uh registration is going to be done or licensing rather.
The one point to your comments is that if we decided that we wanted to go with a third party provider, we don't need a registration license at all. We can go directly to licensing.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. We we can, once we get the licensing out of the way and we figure out what we're doing, then we could talk about what that, what kind of revenue that's going to generate. Is should it be a two percent, three percent, one percent mat tax? Because again, uh it depends how much money we want to make on this thing.
What, Mr. C A O, sorry, would uh would council be interested? You'll recall that uh um our economic development director did a report um uh last fall, I believe, or I can't remember, time flies. But he's done a report on the on a mat tax and has worked extensively in another community on implementing that. Um, would council be interested in hearing another report, uh say in August? If you if you plan to start your licensing um regime in January, um may maybe you could uh get some additional information between now and then and be ready to go shortly after if if you choose to. I don't know how long the process takes, but.
Councillor Sheldon, can it's referred? Just one point to that is something that you had spoken about earlier, like we have to decide if it's going to be at the county level. We can't even have a mat tax, correct? So that's there's something for that to consider too. So if we decide that we think this should be at the county, then the mat tax isn't even a, is a, isn't a topic of discussion, correct?
You you can't have a mat tax at the county, but you could regulate short term rentals at the county and have a mat tax locally, no issue.
Okay, okay, that that's
Key piece of information.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, councillor Carter.
And I I think I'm closer to councillor Ferry on this issue. Um, I, you know, I I have no problem with, you know, moving it out to a third party. That's that's fine if this organization is capable of handling it, you know, and obviously it's a new business and they're expanding and and so on. So uh we would, we would need to make sure that they can handle it. In terms of uh of a mat tax, I I don't see this as, you know, first we do one, then we do the 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 next thing. It's more like a one A and one B. Um, I would want us to, I would hope that we don't have to wait till January to start this licensing process. If we could get it done quicker, that would be great. And I would hope that we would have um, you know, the mat tack discussions and implementation by January. Uh, so that all of next year would be covered uh or or sometime in the in the first quarter of next year so that we would have the mat tax in place for for next year's rentals. Uh, I know there's, you know, there's always all the legal legalities of all these things. So you know, it's it's, it is nicer to get one thing put away and and then get the next one. But I think it it really needs to fit very closely uh together in terms of the timing.
Just one clarification for me, and I'm sorry if I missed this. Did I hear that the third party group could um assist with the mat tax process?
Yeah, so they they can actually assist with the collection uh and then and then provide that to the local municipalities. Um, yeah, they can absolutely do that and and actually have a a if if they're they can, um if they haven't heard from a an operator through a reporting period, then they they will actually reach out and remind them that that money is due and they need to report. Um, I just, if I could, if I could go back to councillor Carter's comments, just the practicality of it. Um, so I I I think we will have to do some kind of competitive process, even if it is a request for information um just to be able to single source this activity. Um, that that would take probably the better part of a month by the time you draft it. And then it's out in the marketplace for a couple of weeks and then evaluated. Um, so that would be a month. They have indicated that it is eight to twelve weeks. Um, in order to be ready for January, um they would need to be, you know, certainly tasked with their responsibilities by mid summer at the latest. So um we need, and and that's to be ready for January. So that's from the third party. So um to say before, I'm not sure we would be in a position to to be able to put it into effect before January. Um, but I I can't speak for the mat tax, maybe the director could, how practical that that uh that would be, that deadline.
Um. Through um Warden. Probably, and that just in my recommendation would be probably to to try and tie as much of this together as you possibly can. Um, because in my experience, the the crux with collecting, um and we're just only, I think specifically talking about applying an accommodation tax to S T Rs at this point. I just want to, okay, so just want to be clear there. Um, if it's, when it's done voluntarily or the municipality is is kind of the ones that are chasing the hosts for the money, it's really, really time consuming. And and my experience, if, and again, if we're using, you know, we have thirteen hundred hosts, we would be lucky if we got maybe four hundred people to actually honestly report on what they were collecting. Um, and even then, there's really no verification method to say how much money they actually collected and how much they're remitting that that in in conversations with a lot of different municipalities um over the years is because I've been involved in this space. That really is what it comes down to. So if councillor to choose to go to a a third if councillor to choose to go to a, a third-party service, we probably would want to build the option in to that process. And then, so that would probably have to be included. Um, if we were to go out for procurement, just that, that the ability is there. Um, obviously it has to be, the bylaw has to be implemented at the local level, but the local municipalities can designate who collects it. Um, and as an example, like theoretically, they could say, hey, we want the county to collect it. I'm not saying that's the way it would go, but you would, it's, it just can only be passed at the local level. So.
The county can't collect taxes.
Pardon?
The county can't collect taxes.
Yeah, correct. I, I, the bylaw has to be passed at the local level. Um, however, the local municipalities can designate and the, anyone they want to collect the tax on their behalf. Um, that's in the legislation. So, um, that just, and again, so that would possibly be the third party. Um, but you would, I would think you just want to look at that, um, and, and keep that in mind. That's really when it comes to the mat tax on STRs, it's you're chasing so many hosts. It's not like you're dealing with ten hotels, you, you know, you're dealing with, you know, twelve, thirteen hundred different people that, you know, some are gonna be very, very honest with you and, and others will just kind of go about their business. Um, and we probably would want to tie reporting of that tax to probably demerit points within the bylaw, right? So if, if someone's not reporting or we think that they're not reporting accurate numbers, there's a mechanism there to ensure, um, you know, money's being returned to the appropriate sources.
Like the ability of, of, of tying, tying things together, um, the, the mat tags and, and, you know, if, if we were to have an agreement with the third-party group, uh, cause you know, when you were talking, I, I brought it up councillor Carter, my mind went immediately to the workload. You know, for staff and this just reduces workload on so many levels. Uh, uh, councillor McKechnie and then councillor Carter. Okay, I'm councillor Fury then.
Okay, well, to me, we, the, the third party has all the information. They've got the license, they know who's got the license, they've got the address, they got the roll number, they got everything, all the approvals. Like it's an, this, this mat tax is not a piece of rocket science. It's been done in lots of places. So it's not a, it's not a possible to do. I think it's a, it's a natural add-on. They're gonna collect it, they're gonna do all the work, take it out of the staff's hands. I, I just don't know why we're even thinking about it very long. But anyway, that's why I think.
Councillor McKechnie.
Um, I, I agree a hundred percent. Uh, I, I think that, uh, when we, uh, finalize this, the mat tax is part of the whole process and from day one, and they know what they're dealing with and, and how, how they're paying it and. The, um, third-party nation, how many weeks basically, um, the people are running for also, so we should be able to monitor the amount of money they're bringing in also. So. Uh, I, I don't think there should be any surprises for these, uh, people that are running these businesses.
So, so just to be clear to, uh, to Scott's point, the mat tax would only be associated with short-term rentals, not with, you know, where there are lodges and hotels and.
I, yeah, right.
At this point in time, because there was a, a lot of opposition to that when it came up earlier for, for the lodges who are obviously already struggling because of the short-term rentals.
Yeah, and paying business tax.
That's, yeah, that's right. Councillor Carter.
Yeah, I think, um, even one of the things that sort of always is at the back of my mind here is I think councillor Ferry and I have both been had people speak to us who have come up with numbers that are much higher than the, that thirteen hundred. And so that's, there's always the fear in my mind that the numbers are much bigger. And so therefore it's even more important that we go with a, you know, a third-party or, and, and have somebody else collecting, um, from the perspective of the workload. And I know that, um, Mr. Rutter is always, uh, you know, forming motions and, uh, in his, uh, on his page there, but I would, I would, I would say that this RFI, that should be coming out of this discussion, that RFI should be there, that, that's something that we want to do right away.
So that I've already written, prepare a request for information to determine the number and capacity of third-party firms to support implementation.
I have two other questions if I could on this, uh, then other parts of this. So, um, one of the things that is in, is in the, in the bylaw and that it states, uh, well, let's first of all, get to the, the fees. I think we, we've got a situation where we say that the fee for, you know, this class A versus class B, class C. I thought in our discussions a while ago, we had dropped it to two classes. It, it doesn't really matter. Uh, but the, uh, the idea of the fee being, you know, five hundred dollars for one and seven fifty, if you've got two or more or, and whatever thousand dollars for this class C, I think it is. I don't believe that it's considerably less work for us if we had somebody who has ten of them, because they're coming to us as ten individual. Um, right, and we have to collect, you know, the taxes on ten units and we have to inspect on ten units. We have to administer on ten units just because the name of the owner is the same, that they should get a price break for having more. You know, actually, most of the problem areas are with people who have multiple units as opposed to the people that have one. So I don't think that there should be a reduction if we've decided and, and again, back to my thought that we have no, you know, no taxpayer money going into this, whether that five hundred is the, the right number. I think that that would be something that I would like, you know, staff to come back to, you know, before we do the final passing of this bylaw, but I don't think that somebody who has more units should pay less per unit than the, uh, than, than somebody who has the one. And then the other issue is that when we, in the definition, I'm sorry, I can't find the right page right now, but in, in the definition of a short-term rental, it says it does not include an owner occupied short-term rental. So I guess I don't want us to have the loophole of somebody who spends a night in their, in their unit and saying, well, I occupy this unit, it's owner operated, so or owner occupied, so I therefore don't have to be, I don't come under the guise of this, this law or anything like that. I, and I, again, I know that, you know, owner occupied really means it's permanent residence as opposed to a cottage. So this would still cover all the cottages and the people who rent their cottage for, you know, a month or so during the year, but I, I would just like to make sure that that language is tightened up enough that anybody who rents is, is covered by this bylaw and we don't have any loopholes.
But I, I think there's probably still a number, a number of things within the, the bylaws themselves that we need to come to an agreement on. For instance, uh, are, are we only going to allow primary residents? Are we going to allow accessory buildings? There's recommendations that don't do that. And I think we're still a number of things. Um, but I, I'm, I'm kind of. Will the, um, resolution that, that our CAO has read to us suffice for now, um, and, and how far do you want us to go today? Given if we decide to go with a third-party, do we need to go through the discussion about the registration bylaw? And, and like what, and what items do you see we need to absolutely land with responses?
As councillor Ferry says, you know, we, we shouldn't be spending any more time thinking on this and just doing it. So I mean, I, I understand that there's all these things, but you know, I would like to get us to get as far today as we possibly can get and just, you know, have general agreement on certain things, whether it be on, on the fees, on the, uh, on, on some of these other things about the, you know, the, uh, the registration versus licensing and, and so on. Let's just get them out of the way so that we can, we can move on as quickly as possible.
I'm, I'm seeing some pretty, uh, solid support for the third-party option, um, which would remove the requirement for, for registration bylaw. So I, I would think at this point in time, assuming that we are going to go in that direction, that we need to reach clarifications for your purposes and, you know, for the, for the bylaw itself on, on the licensing. Part of of the documents. Councillor Ray.
Yeah, after what I've heard in the discussion, I'd like to withdraw my complaint about the mat tax being separate from, from the thing. I think, I think the more I'm listening and the more I'm hearing, it makes logical sense to look one, as you say, part A, part B of the same thing. Yeah, so, so to me, it's no longer an issue.
Thank you for that. Councillor Fury.
Why don't we, uh, have staff come back with, uh, Mike's got a resolution there? Uh, including, uh, a look at the mat tax, including the fee structure and, uh, including some things that we can put our teeth into the next meeting and get this passed. I, I, I think we're all anxious to do something. And if we can't do it till the end of the year, we can't, but if we can, we should. Uh, I, I think we're, we made some real progress today and, uh, thank you for the CAOs and everyone involved. I think as long as we're com- comfortable that this company is going to be able to handle this, that's, I still have a concern. They're a new company. They're taking on a lot of work. And you know how hard it is for us to get inspectors and people. So anyway, I'm confident if they tell us they can, they can. So we have, we have to move forward.
Well, and it, it could be that, that if we, if we, you know, put out a request to see if how many providers there are of this service and we find that there's only one, we can have them come and present to us.
Right on, right on.
Like to see that happen as quickly as we possibly can. Uh, I do think though, that there are some things that we can still resolve and talk about with respect to the licensing bylaw that, that would just take care of certain items like, like the fees, the, you know, the number of, uh, of, of, uh, categories and the, uh, which buildings are going to be allocated. So that, uh, Mr. Stone is, is ready to go ahead with a document that we can all agree to. Um, Mr. CAO, you have a comment or you wanted to?
No, I, 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 I think, um, it would be helpful. I, I can read what I have because I, I have checked off the box around. Um, so basically I, I have that you receive the report and that council direct staff to proceed as follows to prepare a request for information to determine the number and capacity. And that really, we will drill down on that to make sure they can provide the service. I will say that the, um, the CAO from the city of Coortle Lakes said he knew that we would get a, a very solid recommendation from, uh, from his staff, uh, for this part, this third-party that we have interviewed. That staff would prepare a staff, we would prepare a staff report outlining the process to implement a municipal accommodation tax. That the licensing bylaw be amended as directed by council and forwarded to the local municipalities for consideration. Remember that the only direction we received at the county level was to prepare a staff, or was to prepare a draft bylaw. The conversation about whether it would be administered here would, could become part of that recommendation, but we were just asked to prepare a, a draft bylaw. So, um, if we could get direction on the, e- even if Steve were to go through in detail his report on the licensing bylaw, we could get your direction. We could amend that bylaw and then be in a position to send it to the local municipalities as a draft immediately. Um, you know, just really as long as it takes for Steve to make those amendments. So, um, and then, and then you can have a conversation about how you see that. We, we do have to come to some conclusion on whether some or all of it is done at the county or whether it is all done at the local municipalities. We need to, we need, we need direction on that. My, if, if it is at the county, there is no capacity in bylaw enforcement to do that. So we would be starting from scratch. We, we can do that, but I wouldn't want to do what we did with the short-term rental, uh, or with the shoreline bylaw, where we pass the bylaw, have existing staff, you know, try to, try to limp along until we get staff in place. I would really want to make sure that we have staff in place before we, we, we implement. And there are none at this point.
If it was determined, like I, I, I really see the, uh, the benefit of the, of, you know, we, we've all got existing bylaw structures in place and that it does make sense as, as, as councillor Fury argued several meetings ago, that it made sense that the inspection process be done at the lower tier. If, if, um, I mean, we, we will need to talk about whether there needs to be an appeals committee or whether appeals would be dealt with by the director and that would, you know, be the director here. So that places some administrative role here at the county with some contractual agreement. I'm not sure if it's possible for us to have an agreement that, that the municipalities would do the inspections um, through, you know, some process that administration would remain here, you know, that, that's one of the things we need to land on is, is deals would be dealt with. And so I'm looking for comments about, you know, we, we really need to land on where we see this living. Councillor Carter.
Yeah, I think we, we really have to define what needs to be done in, from the perspective of, you know, if the, if the, like, for instance, a, a mat tax is collected by the third-party. If, you know, all of the, um, administration or most of the administration is done by the third-party, we, we almost have to take all aspects of it, like, you know, who, you know, who, who issues the licenses, who, who does inspections, who does the follow-ups on, on complaints, who administers the, uh, the, uh, demerit system, um, you know, who handles appeals and things like that. We almost need to have like that list of things and then a checkbox as to, you know, where, where that, where that should be, uh, you know, from the perspective of, of, of what I've heard today, you know, I, there may be a very small role for the county or there may be a situation where the, uh, the municipality say, hey, county, why don't you handle the appeal process? Because then that takes it one step away from, you know, somebody thinking that, you know, the mayor doesn't like them or something like that. So it, you know, this, yeah, but, but I think that's what we, we need, you know, Steve to do, or Mr. Stone to do is to, you know, come up with all the different segments and then let us decide what box they go into.
I, I think he kind of started to do that because reporting here. Mr. Stone, comments? Appropriate ones only. Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of councils. So, um, wo- wonderful to hear some, uh, the discussion so far, but I should sort of go into the bylaws a bit, uh. Uh, some of the things that have been, uh, expressed are not actually so written in the bylaw and I'll give you my reasons for that. So, but first and foremost, um, just going back to, to, uh, the, the classes. That class system was, uh, first established by the consultant. There's been a number of chatter about it and uh, what I recommended in the staff report was really a sort of a reflection upon some of that discussion, although it wasn't necessarily cast in stone, pun intended. But to be, to be honest to that discussion, it's much easier to administer a licensing bylaw if you are licensing one automobile, one fee, two automobiles, a second fee. Uh, so I would suggest that, uh, you know, hearing the discussion, it's much easier just to say for every operation that it's out there, SDR operation, it requires one licensing, you have to pay one fee for that. So you don't, um, because as you say, uh, if inspections are required, there's the, the same amount of inspections will require whether, yeah, you have one operation or you have ten. Still requires five inspections per operation. So that makes administration way easier if you just have one class. So, uh, the other thing I want to, uh, point out to, uh, council is that just, I know we might go down the road of just having the one bylaw, but the distinction between the two bylaws. And again, the recommendation that I put forward to you and how the bylaw is structured actually is based on discussions I had with the solicitor. It was his recommendation. So the distinction between the two is the, the registration of bylaw allows for sworn affidavits. Uh, to say that my operation is compliant with building cold fire and so on and so forth. So it was designed to allow for people to get their, uh, SDR operation registered. So we knew dima- uh, dynamically how many operations we would ultimately have to inspect. And so the licensing bylaw reflects, again, the recommendation of the solicitor was not to, not to allow for a sworn declaration. It's not to say that the, the, the not to allow for a sworn declaration. It's not to say that the, the, the licensing bylaw could be amended. It was simply that was the recommendation of your solicitor. So that's carried through. So if you're looking at the registration bylaw, you want to look at uh, section two, which deals with the sworn, sworn affidavits or sworn declarations. And if you want to look at how the licensing bylaw uh, requires the inspections, you'll want to look at section four. So if you go down, uh, the road of just one bylaw and that being a licensing bylaw, then council will have to sort of look at section two in the registration bylaw and see and direct staff if they want to sort of massage what's happening in section four of the licensing bylaw to allow for the honor system and as the CEO mentioned, the opportunity for the municipalities to do, uh, audits, you know, periodically, you know, POP inspections, or, uh, as I sort of envisioned inspections related to demerit points. Uh, so if you have encountered a, a demerit point, uh, you forget, failed to, when you're doing a renewal of your application, uh, forgot to get a sign off on your septic system uh, from your hauler that it was pumped out on a regular basis, then that would be a trigger. That actually would be identified through the monitoring system and a flag would be sent to your, uh, billing department, and that would trigger, uh, shall we say, an audit of that particular operation to determine what was amiss there. So simply know the difference between the two bylaws as they are now, and that uh, the licensing bylaw would have to, uh, be enhanced just on that to allow for uh, the honor system, third-party inspections that would have, uh, uh, will continue to allow the municipality to do their spot inspections or their audits as needed. And it's.
Go ahead, Counselor Carter.
Yeah, just to make sure the, we're, we're speaking, um, you know, in context here, I, I don't like the, the honor system word because we've asked somebody to make a legal attestation that they have, they have met all the requirements. So, you know, we're, we're asking them, you know, to sign, virtually sign an oath. So it's not really the honor system. So that I, you know, I know that there's, you know,
There's a difference.
That maybe, well, then there may be a difference, or there may not be according to the lawyers, but I just, just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Right. I, 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 I apologize for the choice of words. Um, but that in essence was it is, is your sworn declaration is, is that you're stating uh, that you've complied with. And I was remiss to say that with section four of the licensing, it's actually section six. And so in particular, just, uh, uh, section six deals with the licens requirement and it speaks uh, quite boldly to the requirement to have, uh, have inspections performed at the municipal level as opposed to a sworn declaration that is in the registration bylaw. And again, the reason for that, um, is that we are anticipating there are going to be some distance in time to allow for all these registrations to occur, uh, to give, uh, and to allow for licensing to happen as well for those inspections to be undertaken without such a load on municipal staff. But again, the consultant that we hired anticipated there might have been three, three to 500. And I think today what we're understanding is well over a thousand. So um, it's not to say that you can have an implementation date of this licensed bylaws in the new year. Uh, and it is, let's say, uh, it gives them for, uh, the operators four months to try and get their inspections, but it does put a burden of responsibility to on municipal staff to organize and undertake those inspections so that the license can be issued. So those are the distinctions there, but happy to go through uh, the licensing bylaw because I think there's some, uh, some interest in, in council to sort, and I refer to that in the staff report as foregoing the registration if you went the third-party monitoring services. So.
Can I, could I just clarify something, Steve? It's a question as much as anything. So in, in five, one T of the license, of the bylaw, which, the licensing bylaw, you, you are saying
Sorry, yes.
Proof of inspection
Right.
by the county and or local municipality
Right.
or a licensed professional.
Yes.
That would be a home, a licensed home inspector.
That's correct.
Um, and they, to ensure, shall ensure compliance and or code compliance with the following, and it mentions provisions of this bylaw, the Building Code Act, the Fire Prevention and Protection Act, Electricity Act, Planning Bylaw, and other municipal bylaws. And then it says a sworn declaration by the owner that they will, uh, comply with the parking management plan. A short-term rental is not subject to, to an order made pursuant to the Building Code Act or a regulation therein. Short-term rental contains functioning smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, fire extinguishers, and accessible exits. They'll confirm that each license, um, to abide by the License Code of Conduct. The owner confirms they will require each renter to abide by the Renters' Code of Conduct. They confirm their, the accuracy, truthfulness, and completeness of the app information submitted. And the owner confirms that they will maintain liability insurance, insurance as required through this bylaw while the short-term rental is being operated as a short-term rental. So those things are checked off and it can be done by a third-party home inspector?
No, the distinction in section T is it's a licensed professional. So it's not a third party. It's not worded that way. So the sworn declaration applies in U applies to the owner swearing those, or the operator swearing those things. So I, I'm just saying that, how, how, and it was again, the, the lawyer's advice to, to make sure that T was something that, uh, uh, municipality, uh, firmly, uh, 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 took hold of and made sure it was done. And then the reason he was saying is simply to avoid any sort of liabilities.
Yeah, I just, I just want to be clear though.
Yeah.
So it's inspection by the county or local municipality or a licensed professional. That licensed professional could be a licensed home inspector.
Caution, uh, cautionary note, there is a licensed home inspector may not be a certified building official. So that's
So that licensed professional would have to be defined as a certified building official?
Well, to cover off the code, code compliance on the entire building code. And similarly with your fire inspections, you may have to have a, uh, a certified fire inspector. That's why I'm just saying that as it's structured in T, five T, my apologies again, is that it's really to uh, sort of, uh, lessen the burden of responsibility on the municipality if they're doing the inspections themselves, or there are no qualified professionals doing those inspections. I simply, that needs to be, if we're going to go to allow for the, uh, the, the third, shall we say, the third-party sworn affidavit approach with spot inspections, we would have to rework that section of the bylaw to sort of to allow an op- another operative clause. Uh, a save and accept clause, if you want to say, and that could be a new you, or it could be, uh, what comes after you, V. So.
Um, fir- first Counselor Fearing and, and then Counselor Rayal.
Well, I, I think Steve, uh, or Mr. Stone, I think you, you have the ability to work that, those words in there. You know, I, I don't have much sympathy. If you've got four or five months to get an inspection, there's all kinds of retired building inspectors around here that probably would like to have some extra cash to do this. So I think the, uh, if, if I, uh, apply for a license and I, I spend six months and don't do anything to get, to conform with the checklist, I, I don't feel sorry for you if you've got to wait another month because municipalities cannot do this. That's why we're trying to get out of it. We just cannot do all these inspections. So I'm counting on your expertise here to, uh, do some fancy wording and get us around this somehow.
Fancy wording and definitions.
Yes.
Counselor Rayal?
Yeah, just, uh,
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, uh, before you go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, go ahead, Mr. Stone.
I was remiss. Uh, thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. I think it's important uh, for me to jump in. I, I was remiss to say, say this before. There's a, a lot of, uh, discussion about, uh, uh, operating, uh, a short-term rental and the encumbering that because they have to get their license and inspection. As it stands today, uh, short-term rentals are not regulated in, in the county or any of the municipalities. And that should, that's, I raise that, uh, uh, because some of the discussion is saying, well, we put them through a license process and they have to wait for, for inspections. That's uh, hard on them. Well, the truth of the matter is, it's not hard on them. It's simply because they're not regulated. They're allowed to carry on the way they are in an unregulated environment. Where it really will be hard on them is when the county or the town municipalities say, okay, as of this date, you need to be regulated and you need to get your inspections, uh, and meet all the requirements of the bylaw. So I just wanted to make that uh, distinction because
Yes.
you know, you can, you can play with the implementation date, you know, if you think a thousand is hard to inspect, you may want to play with your implementation date. Uh, so, uh, thank you for, uh, allowing me to say that we're right now in an unregulated environment.
Okay. Counselor Rayal?
Yeah, just, just, when we talk about the licensing class, we got that table one. I'm just wondering, does it have any value at this point? Because if we're going to have one license per each unit and the number of people in a unit is determined by the number of bedrooms and so on and so forth, I, I'm not exactly sure what we're saying in table one.
Thank you, Madam Warren, rest of council agreed. Uh, I think as, as the discussion sort of unfolded today, we were looking, uh, looking at the possibility of two classes and then a suggestion of one class, uh, or one license for every STR operation. And from a, um, ease of implementation and enforcement and so on, I would agree with that. And so you, there's a few things in this, uh, in the licensing bylaw that are critical. That would be one. The other one I would say is some of the discussions that, uh, we hope to have on whether you will allow it in anything but the primary building on the property. Uh, and the other thing too, uh, you will see that, uh, the, the, the bylaw is very strict on number of bedrooms, uh, persons per bedroom, and max number of people in any STR operation. That's something that council will have to uh, uh, firmly decide for us to finalize the bylaw. My approach in terms of drafting or building on the regulation that was presented to council was to be very strict. And, uh, council has the, uh, the ability to, and, uh, lessen those restrictions as you see fit. So uh, but I would agree with the statement.
Ass- assuming that, that you can blend the requirements that you talked about previously of the registration bylaw into the licensing bylaw. I think we need to go through those specific items that you need to have resolved. A couple of which you just mentioned today. If we can go through some of them today and land, uh, I, I think that just reduces the workload later on, and we're just that much further ahead. Um, Counselor Carter?
Just one minor point and, and then something else is, uh, in your five U, three, um, you know, it says that you need functioning carbon monoxide alarms. I believe if you don't have any combustibles in the house, like there's no fireplace, if it's a totally electric house, you don't need that. So it may be just something to check. That, and the second thing is, is that I think we all have to agree that this is going to be a living document. We're not going to get it perfect on the first time. And if we're too strict and, you know, people come back and say, it's not fair to make it two per whatever, we can always change it. But I, you know, I don't, I don't want us to get, just spin our wheels trying to make it perfect. Uh, you know, I think we, we get it as good as we can get. And then, uh, you know, we can always adjust it, particularly it's going to be out in the public in the next, you know, month or so. It's not coming into play until January. There may be people who say, foresee a problem that we can fix before January. So.
Counselor Rayal?
Yeah, but the, the only thing that I, we, at least I don't think we've talked about is differentiating not so much the one-to-one, but the cut, the differential between casual versus commercial. Someone who is only going to rent it for a short number of times in a year versus someone who was renting it on a more commercial basis. Is that something that we want to differentiate?
Go ahead, Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Madam Warren, and the rest of council. So it is, I, I, if I may be so bold, is I think from an enforceability standpoint, you cannot, you cannot make those differentiations. It's very difficult. Uh, and I've tried to do that in this, uh, this bylaw as, as I mentioned, it's, uh, uh, very, it's re- it's a restrictive bylaw and it's, um, uh, sort of reflects the conversations that have happened around, uh, county council, but it also reflects some of the uh, uh, input that we received from the public as well. So that's why I would not differentiate. It would mean a very difficult task to enforce.
Can you take us through those items that you need clarification on for the licensing bylaw?
So, uh, yes, Madam, uh, Warden, uh, to the rest of council, I can. So uh, this, I guess it would be the second attachment to the report. I'll just go quickly through it. So the, uh, definitions, one of the recommendations that the solicitor did was to just say, make sure all your definitions are homing genius across both documents. So you'll see in the licensing bylaw. They now, um, are, are reflective of the beach. That's just a point to your, uh, to the counselor's comment about commercial activities. There was actually, uh, commercial, uh, activity definition, which was, uh, he suggested it being deleted or refined. So what we did is replaced it with special activities. So what we're, what he, council, I think, was trying to suggest was that if you rented a short-term rental, you can't also have your wedding party there or some other event. And it was actually referred to as commercial activity. So that's been replaced with special events, uh, definition. So, um, they also introduced, uh, there was a renter's code referenced, and through my research, I also found licensee code of conduct. So we've now added a definition and a, and a, um, a schedule for council to look at. That's included in the, I guess, the fourth attachment. So you may want to look at that and make any suggestions you have on that. So that's a big change to, to the bylaw. There's, um, what else? There's a lot of things that were clarified, uh, that the solicitor asked for clarification. So we've seen that there, most of the highlights are, are shown in yellow are clarifications. So the big, uh, the big one for council to decide, um, and it shows up in blue is where does, uh, county council want uh, the licensing, uh, to rest? Will it be a, a local or a local municipal responsibility? Will it be a county one? So right now, as it's structured, the bylaw refers to municipality for good reason. Cause at some point, if it is a local, uh, municipality enforced bylaw, it will have to the township or the municipality's name in there. And all references to director may change as well because it may be uh, uh, another person at the local level who is tasked with administering this bylaw. So I just raised those as sort of common or general points. But to, uh, council's discussion so far, it's table one licensing class. Uh, whether or not we will allow for, uh, one class, that can be changed to reflect uh, just only having one. Uh, but what's critical in here, uh, is, um, the column that refers to maximum occupants per short-term rental. And, and again, a lot of discussion was raised around the eight. And so I carried that through to this discussion. And again, it's a very re- restrictive. Um, and in, uh, in terms of bedrooms, Um and in uh in terms of bedrooms, uh you can only have two two occupants uh per bedroom. So um if you have um if you have ten bedrooms, you can still only have eight occupants. So that's how that table will work. And again, council will have to decide if they want to be a little bit more flexible than how how the number of occupants for short-term rentals being done. So if you only have, if you have uh one bedroom cottage, a very small one, you can't have a, you can only have two if you're renting it out. And this table's tied into another section of the bylaw that says even even further says that if your septic system can't handle it and you uh the uh it can only handle four, but you have, you can only you can only rent it out and have four people in it because your septic system limitations. So there's a a number of ways that that table gets kind of dealt with uh by regulations further on to safeguard the environment and the shoreline. So uh the finally on this table, there was a total number of nights rented, and I think this was uh similar to the discussion we had uh with the counselor. And I actually deleted that column because it's very difficult for uh for bylaw enforcement officer to go out and determine, oh, you only rent it, you're only allowed to rent thirty days, but I can't tell if you're renting uh sixty days, right? So I deleted that um. In section five.
I think we we need to like what I'd like us to do when you say you need a decision on that. Let's make a decision on that section. Um and so I'm I'm looking to see, I I do kind of wonder about if you've got five bedrooms. Why would you be limited to eight? Now, it did, it needs to tie in with the septic system. But uh this this also rel- relates to, are we counting bunkies or not? Um and so we need to land there, and I'm looking for comments.
Madam Warren, if I may.
Absolutely.
So again, in the spirit of uh being clear in terms of forcibility, the bylaw is set up only to allow for short-term rentals within the primary building, so the cottage or house. So bunkies uh would not be allowed. Uh you could rent them out and nor could you have a second. If you uh were fortunate enough to have a a secondary dwelling unit or a separate accessory dwelling unit, you couldn't rent those out. It'd have to be in the primary structure, so.
Are we in agreement with that? Uh, Council Fury.
Well, well, I don't like typically, we see that uh you can have two per bedroom. If the septic system has the capacity, is that not a safe way to go? So if you have four bedrooms, you can have eight. You have five bedrooms and the septic's big enough, you can have ten. Doesn't that make sense?
It does. Now, Sir Carter.
I I agree totally. And and the thing about the bunkies is uh I understand that the bunkie can't be used as a separate uh unit. But you know, if you have a, you know, a three-bedroom cottage and a bunkie, which is the fourth bedroom. Uh and the kids want to sleep out in the bunkie or something, I don't, I don't again, back to if the septic can handle it, it it should be two per bedroom, including the bedrooms that could be in a bunkie.
But what if they're just renting out the bunkie?
No, no, they can't do that. I mean, you'd be renting out the property if you if you know what I'm saying.
I through Council Rail.
I think I think the thing we're all trying to agree to is you can't rent the house to 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 group A and the bunkie to group B. But that option just cannot exist. If 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 you're going to have a family of 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 four, you got two kids that are going to make a racket, you put them in a bunkie, everybody's going to be happy. But there's the same group of people to just use in that as a bedroom or a place to play or whatever they want to use it for. But I totally agree that we cannot have two groups, one using the bunkie or any other combination uh in 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 the same building, in in a single rental.
Uh thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So again, in the spirit of enforceability, that's why uh I chose the number eight and I chose it in the primary building. Again, it's very difficult uh to even differentiate between groups. Um uh and this has its genesis and how the province now de- de- identifies dwellings versus single-family dwellings. Now it's single detached dwellings because you can't differentiate between groups or even families who who can occupy a dwelling unit. So again, what I was uh it's it's fine to um uh as uh the counselors would suggest that you could include that. The the thinking behind it was uh it it was a, it's a performance standard that can be easily uh acquired as if you do an inspections, certainly to the number eight uh has the benefit of reducing crowding at the shoreline. So if you can imagine uh a dock uh and we've had complaints and I've seen photos of one particular uh a sure uh a short-term rental where they had about twenty people on a dock. And they were all from different families, friends and so on and so forth. And it was a nuisance from a uh an enjoyment of of the lake. So that's sort of the thinking behind the eight. Now, there are opportunities uh within the bylaw, and I'll speak to it a little further about the appeals committee. There was some discussion uh that council had with regards to allowing for variances and whether the director would be allowed to issue a variance for uh for license restrictions. So let's say we do settle on eight as the maximum number per short-term rental. I had built in a clause that allows for an appeal to be lodged. I did not want to assume the responsibility of allowing for uh variances. But the appeals committee has that opportunity as the bylaw is structured to look at a uh a very large cottage or a very large house that may have five five bedrooms to say, okay, my septic system is state-of-the-art. I think I can have sixteen people on uh the site. And the appeals committee could, based on the facts that were presented, uh allow for that variance to happen. So it's it's built into the bylaw, but again, the bylaws um set up in a strict way to allow it to be easily enforced at the local level.
Yeah, I'm definitely um, you know, just to move this ball along, I think we we sit here and keep discussing and discussing this issue, but I think uh we we're all getting close to this decision. And my my uh views are that definitely uh can't rent two different parties, two people, one one family and one bunkie and another family, two 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 separate fa- like families. Definitely don't agree with that, but if somebody's septic system allow can handle the bunkie, then maybe the guy built the bunkie and put in a brand-new system. Uh he should be allowed to uh use that bunkie and and rent it out to the people that are in the primary residence. Uh I I definitely think in in the parkings available. Uh when we 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 have these large groups, five-bedroom, six-bedroom places, they gotta make sure they got enough uh parking spaces also. So if they fit all those boxes, fill all, check all those boxes, why couldn't we? You know, the the guy spent twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars on a a septic system for five-bedroom or six-bedroom cottage. Why should we just tell him he can only have eight people there?
Um, I uh I'm looking for thoughts on this.
Well, I think it, actually, I think it was Council McCackney way back from one of the earlier discussions. They talked about you know, having his children and their grand and his grandchildren over. So you know, if I if I take the scenario where somebody's, I've got a big house and and you know, a couple have got their two children who are both married and they have two children. All of a sudden, you're up to ten people. And really, it's just one family. If the place is big enough, you know, to handle the number of bedrooms and the septic can handle that number of bedrooms. I don't see the the limitation of eight. It's a bit of an arbitrary number. And the fact of the matter is, is a lot of times the twenty people on the dock are going to be people who are in different places who are all going to congregate in one in one at one of the, you know, the properties. So i- in terms of the number of people sleeping there, if you've got the, if you've got the bedroom capacity and the septic capacity, I don't see why the limit is is required.
So what you're saying, based on the number of bedrooms, two per bedroom, that adds up to more than half a month, that's fair. Uh, Council Shell.
That was exactly what I was going to say, two per bedroom. I'm I'm will just assume that if it was, if the if the um cottage or house, whichever was built with five bedrooms that the septic was in was installed to support five bedrooms.
Um, I if you're looking, I'm wondering about here is it not, and I don't disagree with you at all. Um I'm just thinking that's
Uh I'm I'm wondering if 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 it would make any difference if we said overnight occupants. Does that skew things at all? Uh because you you could have, you know, you could have, say, you've got five bedrooms and you've got ten people there, but you've got family in the area that you want to bring over. There's there, there might be twenty people there in the daytime, but they're not actually impacting, well, I suppose they are impacting the septic system, but I mean, people have parties all the time and we don't tell them that they can't have a a gathering. Um I I'm just wondering if there's if there's any thinking that you've come across with respect to specifying overnight occupants as opposed to just occupants.
Uh through you, Madam Warren, to the rest of council. So uh cautionary note again on on that is that it's if you're dealing with a daytime violation of, say, noise uh and so on, or even a parking violation for that matter, it's hard to differentiate between who is occupant and who is an overnight occupant. So
Just just one of those things that I had to had to have addressed. Council Burton.
I'm I'm okay actually with the with the number eight uh or two per bedroom. And if uh if the uh but I think for our for our start, starting point, eight is the number. If we decide to, if if people built or have a septic that can uh hold more, they can come to the appeal committee and and uh and get it changed.
Council rail.
The the only the only problem I've got with 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 not having it apply to overnighters is like you you got a bunch of people around around the area. If I'm a frequent flyer and I go back to the same place a lot, I want to meet friends there. They're going to get to know me and they're going to come over to my hey, you're up again. And next thing I know, I got fifteen people there. Uh because I'm a short-term rental, I can't let that happen. But if I'm not a short-term rental, I can let that happen. The other try thing you got is Uncle Bernie's going up to the to the cottage and we live in in Halliburton, so we're going to go over and visit Uncle Bernie at a barbecue for a couple of hours. Um and and I don't disagree with the the cars. But having said that, the the number of cars is the number of cars. If 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 there's too many, uh regardless of whether they're staying there or whether they're not, there's too many. Uh now the problem we've got, which we've always had, is how do you enforce it? And and that is, I don't know, do we have a car counter or do do we have somebody uh go on complaints? I I I think we're getting into the weeds to the point where
You are.
That that's where we don't want to go.
Comment, Mr. Stone.
So um thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So uh to to the counselor's uh comment. Uh the bylaw is set up for occupants, so it's the assumption is the people who are staying overnight, they're occupying the bedrooms for the purposes of sleeping in them. I don't know if uh I mean, there's uh certain not uh the bylaw is not uh regimented enough to deal with somebody who's having uh accompanying over for for swim off the dock kind of thing. To your point about parking, uh there there that's a new addition into um the bylaw, which is a parking management plan. The assumption is that for every bedroom that you have, you would have at least one parking space uh per bedroom. Now, it may be that uh council thinks that's a bit too restrictive and you want to have I have two parking spaces per per bedroom. On bigger properties, that might not be a challenge, but in a um you know, a tenth of an acre lot, you have three bedrooms to have six parking spaces might be a challenge. Simply to say that if you don't meet the requirements in terms of your license, uh you can actually appeal that restriction and ask for uh ask for a grace from the appeals committee to go above and beyond uh the limitations that's in the bylaw, so.
Um, I am going to go around and ask for a show of hands with respect to uh maximum of eight or two per bedroom. Um acknowledging that if if we do stick with the maximum of eight to begin with, that there is an appeals processor as as Counselor Burton has raised. So I just so that we can land somewhere with this, um you know, and acknowledging Counselor Carter's comment that you know, this is a living document and we can make changes to it later on. So maximum of eight or two per bedroom, starting with Council Carter.
Two per bedroom.
There can be ten people.
Thank you. Yeah, I I'm definitely agreeable to 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 per bedroom.
Sorry, it should go to uh Council Fury. Maximum of eight people or two per bedroom?
I I like two per bedroom, but on the other hand, it has to be compliant with the septic system. And if that isn't the case, and does that not? Yeah, but is that not in their in their application? Uh, Mr. Stone, when they applied, did they not say how many, how many bedrooms they've got or how many, how many they sleep?
For you, Madam Warren, that is correct.
Yes.
So we know that.
So it's two per bedroom, but based on what their septic system is approved for.
And and I can solve another problem. The appeals should go to the county, the appeals process.
We'll get to that.
I'm trying to move.
Uh, Council Burton.
Uh eight and uh the uh appeal committee at the county.
Um, I'm an eight um for now. Um I I do like the idea of looking at this down the road, but just to get things started uh and to reduce the impact on the lakes, I'm I'm an eight and appeals at the county. Council rail.
Two per bedroom.
And
Two per bedroom.
Okay, there we go. So we've landed on two per bedroom.
Thank you, Madam Warren, and the rest of council. So that will be reflected in a revised table one, so.
Um, could could I just have the remaining members of council just to speak to appeals and and where that would be handled? So back to you, Council Shell.
I would say the county as well.
The county. As far from me as possible.
So that's another thing that's responded that we've uh that we've landed on. Um and uh I think maybe
Uh having said that, I I think that we need to have a a lunch break. Um so we'll break until quarter to one. Uh amendments to the bylaw is agreed or Okay. I guess we're not quite ready yet. Okay, welcome back uh to our discussion on short-term rentals. So next on your list of things that need to be uh resolved. Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So just to recap, we were dealing with the classes, so it was agreed. Um, just in reference to uh two persons per bedroom, uh I will note to council that section three point or sorry, six point three actually has a reference to uh max maximum or sorry, six point three actually has a reference to uh max, maximum occupancy uh, being tied to the sixty, existing septic system performance. And so the chief building official has the ability to reduce that number based on its limitation. So.
I think we can all agree to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the only other thing I, that we had added, uh, uh, since council has seen the draft is the whole idea of a parking management plan. And again, the premise is to allow for uh, uh, one parking space per bedroom, but council may want to increase that. So I, I would say uh, based on, based on that, uh, it is one per bedroom. If you want, we can add, change it to two if you like.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Shell.
Sorry, that just, that seems reasonable to me. I think Mr. Stone's looking for a response from council.
Um, thoughts? Uh, Counselor Fury.
Well, I don't know. This is a tough one because if two people come in a car, that's one thing, but if your, if your wife brings her car up, then you can't park there. So I, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that is. Maybe the, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I don't think there's a firm answer.
They need to learn to get along and drive together.
That's exactly right, or else stay apart.
Lots of experience.
I do.
No, I, but remember that it is, what's being proposed is one per bedroom. So if it's a three-bedroom cottage,
It got three cars.
permitted, yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
So next, uh, there was a requirement or a request for signage. So we did add that to the bylaw as well. And so now you're required to have a, a zero point two meter square meter sign. So the sign would actually be posted, posted on the building itself or the, uh, the primary residence. So uh, if you wanted to, to be posted at the road as well, we would have to add, add a requirement for that as well. So.
Thoughts?
Well, again.
Go ahead.
Well, if, if it's, if it's at the cottage and you're not in at the cottage, you're not going to see it. If you drive by the road, you'll know there's a cottage rental there. So I, I don't know what, I think typically, um, Mr. Stone, the, uh, it's, it's on the cottage, isn't it?
That's correct. Uh, some bylaws actually uh have them illuminated. I didn't want an illuminated sign. So, uh, but, and some do have, have them overhanging uh, the entrance. And I don't know if you want to be that bold in terms of signage.
And what was the size of the sign again?
I do see Counselor Fury's point about it being at, at the road as opposed to on the cottage itself, because how would you know? Uh, it looks like Counselor Carter's got a comment.
Well, I'm just thinking that in, in all of our dealings, if, if the cottages is on Highway thirty-five, then the MTO will get involved. I mean, I, I don't know that there's, there's any good solution here. I think this is another one of those where we, we start with something and then, and then have to figure it out.
Would start with on the cottage?
Not whatever is being recommended. I'm not.
Yep. Agree.
And in addition, it would identify the, the, the operator would have the license and it would also have a number to phone uh in, in terms of compliance. So, okay.
So is everyone okay with that? As it stands now. Counselor Rayal.
Just had one, if somebody did have a complaint and it's on the cottage, I can't get the information unless I get it off the cottage. Am I trespassing to get to the cottage? Just, just, just fodder.
Counselor Carter.
We, we also have the seven twenty-four from the third-party provider. Call them up and say this place.
Next.
So in addition to uh, the bylaw was that of a, a licensee code. So uh, we've, uh, I've appended one to the report, but it's now a requirement as part of the bylaw that the licensees actually have to enter into uh, code of conduct, sign that and register that with their license. So.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the code of conduct and we're good with that now? Okay.
Okay. So just again, on the parking discussion, uh, section six, five refers to generally, so it, uh, one parking space per bedroom. So there is some flexibility for the licenser, us, the municipality to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Any questions or concerns there?
Uh, one of the prohibitions that was carried on uh from the consultant through the lawyer uh is uh six point seven. And this uh goes to um short-term rentals not being allowed in accessory dwelling units. And there was discussion about accessory buildings, including bunkies. So if council wants, uh, wants uh the flexibility in that regard, I will have to uh go, go through the bylaw and uh enhance sections like this that says that uh it, uh, short-term rentals will be allowed in accessory buildings.
I'm not sure that that's, that's not what I heard.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I heard that we would not allow uh short-term rentals in accessory buildings. But if the overflow based on the number of bedrooms allowed for like the kids to go and sleep in the bunkie, that was something different. You know, I, I'm not looking to see a change in the bylaw based on this.
So just that I'm clear, if the, the way the definitions are set up, guest room only applies to a room within a primary structure. I'm simply saying that if you want it changed, I'll have to change.
No, not much.
Uh, go ahead, Counselor McKee.
Yeah, um, for, for my wife and I Suzanne, like we have two bedrooms in our house, our cottage. And we build a bunkie for my two daughters. And when I put the brand-new septic system in, which I had to, I had, I'm, I'm licensed for my inspection, when they come out for the septic inspections for four bedrooms. So if I wanted to rent that out, you're trying to tell me I can only rent out the two bedrooms in the cottage?
I, I, what I'm saying is that you can't rent out the bunkie separately. Like you can't rent out the bunkie. You couldn't be in your house and rent out the bunkie.
Okay.
But if you, if you have, if you have approval for, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, if you have approval for, for a septic system that provides for, say you've got two bedrooms in the house and the, and a bedroom in the bunkie, then, then you could have six people. Yeah, okay. We're just, we're just trying to ensure that nobody is renting out their bunkie as a separate short-term rental. Or whatever.
What you're, what you're saying, and I, I, I know, but I just want to make sure I'm clarifying this. I'm staying in my cottage, but I ran into the bunkie. That, running the bunkie is a no-no.
Right.
That's fine with me.
Counselor Carter.
But I want to rent my bunkie.
Yeah. Yeah. Heard me, you would, with a house.
If he rents the whole thing, he's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that what Mr. Stone is saying is that's not how it reads right now and he has to go change something.
I just.
Madam Warren, that is correct. I'm just clarifying uh uh, highlighting sections in the bylaw that doesn't reflect council's thinking at this moment. So.
So is there a way that you can word that to provide for, okay?
Yeah.
Good, next.
So, uh, we had some discussion about the uh appeals committee. And um, the one thing uh that the solicitor asked for clarification on is whether or not the director uh could authorize variances to the bylaw uh, on their own. And after thinking about it, I decided that it wasn't a good idea.
Good decision.
So.
Yeah, it's a good one.
So I added the words uh that um uh, I may be, or the director may be is, able to issue a license. Uh, where are variances of vault involved as approved by the appeals committee? So that, that sort of is a saving clause in there.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Now, another very large uh, um, section in the bylaw that I would like council to uh, provide very clear direction on is uh eight point five, and it deals with demerit points. And that ties in very closely to, um, I think it's section, section fifteen that actually lists out what the demerit, what the violations are that will warrant a demerit a point or a loss of that. And I'll stress that this bylaw is extremely restrictive when it comes to uh, demerit points. It only takes three demerits to be suspended um, uh, from your license and suspensions can run for six months to a year. And uh, uh, further uh a violation or a loss of demerit point could end up with a permanent sus, uh, suspension. Um, some municipalities who are operating demerit systems uh, go as high as fifteen. Um, ta, uh, tiny township, which is in my neck of the woods, they just issued a, their bylaw and it has fifteen. So you can uh, uh, amass a number of uh violations and still not be uh suspended. Um, but in this particular case, this bylaw is very strict. Um, and I quite happy to have a discussion. If you want this section to be more flexible, we can sort of approach uh, uh, a more typical fifteen-point demerit standard. It's just that I'll have to work, rework this table.
Counselor Carter.
Uh, well, I like what you have. And, uh, you know, if, if somebody, you know, you know, there's some of the things where you lose three demerit points would be something like advertising without a license or something. If somebody made a technical, you know, mistake or something like that, there is an appeals committee that can, that can take care of that. But aside from that, I mean, if we look at what, what these are, I mean, if we have three violations of uh, uh, of, you know, the, the code or the, or whatever, I mean, tough. I mean, you know, like if you, if, if you can't do the time, don't.
I, I completely agree um that, that I would be satisfied with things as they stand. They can go to the appeals committee if there's an issue with it. And you know, to me, I'm concerned still about the number of, of short-term rentals and how that's impacting our housing situation. And and so to be a little strict on this, it doesn't, doesn't bother me one bit. Um, Counselor Rayal.
So if I'm not mistaken now, so that each unit has three demerits. Therefore, if you have three demerits against that unit, that unit is shut down. But the rest, if you had four, would stay open. But you'd have to fix that one or you can't do it again.
Uh, uh, through you, Madam Chair, uh, to the rest of council, yes. So as it stands, we're thinking of licensing each individual uh STR operation. So doesn't matter if you've got six licenses, because you're operating six. If one of them fails, it's out, out of your rental pool.
Well, I like that because if, if one of the buildings is defective and it accumulates uh demerits based on defect, defects, structural, integral, whatever it is, then it forces you to maintain the place.
Hmm.
Or just don't rent it.
Right.
We're all in agreement there?
Yep.
Okay. Here on.
So moving on to the actual demerits themselves, the council was interested in um, section fifteen, which is the demerit points. Um, the solicitor did uh suggest a few deletions, uh, and I chose not to delete, but rather to clarify. And they, they would be for the more arduous uh violations. So for example, operating an STR license, uh, without a license, that would be an automatic three, three demerit. Uh, and so where that would apply is, uh, say you failed to renew your license in the second year. Um, then that would put you into a suspension mode right away. And um, you would have to cease operations and then reapply. Uh, similarly, advertising is um, uh, the other counselor mentioned, advertising uh without a license. Um, and opera, um, I guess providing false information on your uh STR application. So.
Counselor Carter.
You just, you just mentioned something that that reminded me of something from earlier is when, when somebody does apply for the licensing, there should be a portion of that application is non-refundable. Right? So in other words, if you apply, if you apply for something and we're, we're going through the process, if, if it's $500, say, you know, $200 is non, non-refundable, that, that gets us into this, this whole situation where by, somebody applies and you don't give them the license for whatever reason. Like we went through a lot of work to get to that point. So we should, there should be a non-refundable part of that.
Mr. Stone.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So that be sort of structured in your fees and tariffs by law, how that would uh work out.
So that just needs to be recommended when we come back to this. So we know what, everything that we have to do to cover all this off.
Counselor Rayal.
If we're, if I'm not licensed and I'm renting through an agency, so I never advertise, I really let the agency do it for me. Where do we stand on that? Or is that something that is just going to happen?
Mr. Stone.
Madam Warren, to the rest of council. So that's what your monitoring service uh, would do their scan to find uh rentals through, if you want to call it third-party advertising firms. And there's a, a, a fairly healthy list that they'll scan on a regular basis. My understanding is they'll perform those sweeps every, every second day of the week.
That responds to your question. You're good. Okay, next.
Uh, one of the other bigger changes, and I know uh county council's been quite interested in uh amps, which is administrative monetary amps penalties, which is different than your uh part one and part three uh provincial offenses fines. Um, the solicitor um uh, made a comment that he felt it was premature at this point to, to actually have that section within the bylaw. Um, and I am of agreement, it requires a separate bylaw altogether. Um, so it was removed. So we're, from a penalty standpoint, um, uh, the bylaw considers uh serious violations to go through a part three summons. So we'd uh, lay information and go off to court and have a judge or a justice of the peace make a determination on it. And uh, once these bylaws are in place or this bylaws in place, we can actually go to the ministry uh and ask for part one tickets to be applied as well. And that'll be a further step uh either by the county or by the municipality. But it doesn't preclude the use of amps in the future. Um, once a municipality or the county uh brings, uh, brings about a bylaw to that effect, it's an easy amendment to to the parent bylaw to include that as a, an opportunity. So with that, that's a, I really uh thank you for your direction. And uh, I hope to have uh, the wordsmithing, there will be a few notwithstanding clauses now added to the bylaw uh, where I was a bit restrictive. I'll add uh, a clause that allow for things like uh uh, operators to apply for a license and swear that their places uh, up to snuff when it comes to building code and other code compliances. But uh, the bylaw will be working in such a way that it reserves the right for us to do our inspections. All, so.
Have we landed on the uh duration of the license, whether it's one or two years? Have we landed on the duration of the license, whether it's one or two years?
Pardon me, Madam Warren, as to rest of council, so. Again, I had been speaking as if it was a one year. License. Again, I would certainly. As this is a new program for either the municipality or county to administer, I would encourage one year. At this time.
Council in agreement with that. Okay. So it looks to me like the only thing that we really need to resolve is where. Where this lands, upper tier, lower tier.
I just asked one one quick question and I don't want, I don't need us to kick it down the road a long time, but. Somebody explain to me like, so I'm just using myself, my wife, our situation. So we're we're staying in our cottage, got a two bedroom bunky. And I want to rent it out to my sister. So what what's the reasoning why I couldn't do that?
Why don't you, why would you rent it to your sister?
Because she's got lots of money.
Then it's it's a short term rental in in my estimation, but I, you know, I I could be wrong, I don't know why you would.
No, I'm okay, I'm renting it to a friend. Like what what's what would be the reasoning why I couldn't do that, like I'm staying in my cottage?
To me, that's opening the door for every bunky in the in the county to be rented out on an individual basis, separate from the. From the primary building.
But if if my septic system. Merits four bedrooms is that. Because, you know, I think the scenario is is gonna come up where people are gonna question that with us, like saying. On a septic system.
Right now, that's not what our bylaw is allowing now, we we've given a certain amount of leeway with respect to. If it's included in that number of bedrooms on the property overall. And your septic system allows for it, it can be part of the overall. But not something that you would rent out separately.
Doesn't look like I'm gonna win this one, so thank you very much.
Did you have a comment, Counselor Carter?
Well, I think there's there's two cottages right nearby property that have three or four bunkies. I mean, this all happened. You know, some of these started in the nineteen thirties, right? And so you, if you had the ability to rent out your bunkies individually. I mean, they could have like four rentals going on on their property each weekend as opposed to one. So I think that's, you know, we. It's not perfect, but I think we we need to, we need to draw the line on at some point.
And your. Your sister or sister in law is welcome, but you can't charge her. Mister Stone.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council, if I may, this is a, this is a. A bylaw to license a business, so. The response there would be if a person is operating a short term rental. Uh, they're operating a business, it's for gain. And they would be subject to the to the requirements of the bylaw, so.
We've heard, we've heard this argument from you from the from the beginning and we've made some some move in your direction, but.
I mean, I'm not upset, I I just think that. You know, like if like a situation, I don't know who would have three bunkies on their property, that's a known.
More than you realize.
Okay, but I I I still think that we're gonna get questioned on that for, because people are gonna say, well, I'm staying there and running it out. So it's even a better situation because I'm gonna be overseeing the operation and somebody's gonna be aggravating the neighbors, they'll be aggravating me. So I'll be the one going knocking, telling them to turn the music down or. I'll be quiet.
Well, if you know, if there's, if there were was agreement from other members of council, we would continue to discuss it, but. And I don't hear that. So we are now at. Does this live at the county? Does it live at the lower tier or is there, I don't know that now, if if we are not going to have a. Registration process if we went with the third party management that. That there would be a spit.
Can I just clarify that? In in other, so I'll use the city of Cothalakes as an example, as I understand it, they still have two staff responsible for. What I would call administration and inspection. And and then and would have larger. You know, finance departments, corporate services departments than any of us would locally or at the county. To help, you know, process payments and financial stuff and other things. The. So there is still an administrative. There's still an administrative support required. And as I say, in their case, they considered that they had six hundred. And they they have two administrative staff doing inspections and and. Administration and then one by law enforcement officer assigned to this. So that's that's. For six hundred properties, so even if, you know, the other, the third party implementation is is takes a lot of that workload. Sending letters, doing all of that stuff, but there's still an administrative responsibility to be done.
Is there a way for, if if it was decided that it best lived at the county level? Because I know there's some thinking that that's the best place, some thinking not. For the county to have a contractual agreement with the. Lower tiers. To to do the inspections. Counselor Ray.
To me, all we're doing here is we're talking about what we do with other similar. Challenges, we have CBOs. They take their direction from the building code, we have. Fire chiefs who take their direction from the fire marshal. Uh, we have building officials who take their information from the bylaws that are not the the by law enforcement bylaws. Planners take it from the planning act and whatever, so we have, we could have enforcement at the lower level. That would just enforce a county bylaw as opposed to a provincial guideline, I don't see the problem. But I mean, it's 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 just a set of rules. You abide by them, it's that simple.
Well, I I guess I'm just asking to see if there is a problem or if there is something that needs to be done to ensure that that's in place. Counselor Burton and Counselor Carter.
Just through the mic, I guess if the. Cothalakes have. Extra staff for for six hundred. Are we gonna have to double that compliment? For our numbers.
It's, I've thought, it's a great question, I've thought so much about it, I, it's really difficult to answer. Because I don't know the capacity at your local municipality, so it's really challenging. I I think on the on the face of it, you would say, yes, you would need twice as much capacity. But if if you have staff that exist in your operation now that could. You know, that have capacity to pick up some of that slack, you may not need to just double it. But the one, the one area that. Concerns me some about it happening here is that. The vast majority of the information required to do the inspections and to do. You know, much of the support work exists at the local level, not here. So your building department, whether it's electronic or paper, has a building, has a property file for every building. In theory, and so they should have, they should know the number of bedrooms, know the number of, you know, that. They've either done the septic reinspection or the inspection, that's all done at the local level. We wouldn't have access to any of that information now, could we get access? There's probably a way we could figure that out, but it's it adds to the complexity of it.
Counselor Carter.
Yes, two things, one, you know. If I look at how much we're gonna charge for the licensing and so on, there's, there, you know, we have. We pay the third party and so on, and then there's some extra monies that are involved. You know, if I need three quarters of a of. Some sort of inspector, three quarters of a by law enforcement officer, then I could. I could use that other quarter for other things in my own municipality. You know, because I, there are, there are some funds that are available for to me because of the licenses. I guess the second part of it is, is I'm not really certain we need to discuss that exactly today. You know, if we, if if Mister Stone is gonna come back to us with the, with the, you know, sort of the more final. Document. You know.
About the third party.
Yeah, we could, we could think about that in in preparation and and make those. Like I said, there's four or five different areas, including the appeals committee and so on, and we could maybe just work our way through those rather quickly. Uh, at at the next meeting, I think, I think we know what we have to think about. And if we get the the now. Like I, you know, coming into today, I I wasn't, this third party thing wasn't as, you know, top of mind is as it is right now. So I'm looking at this in a in a different way, so I would like to have a little bit more time to decide which ones are at the county. Or can the county offer us a service or do we go to a third party, whatever we do?
Uh, Counselor Perry.
Well, I think the. I think it doesn't, it's it's just adding to the bureaucracy to take it to the county. For instance, we've looked at. At at our municipality, we think we can do it with existing staff. Or like Bob says, maybe a part time staff and he can help in our bylaw department. We have lots of revenue, then we're adding the accommodation tax to it, which has definitely got to be done at the lower tier. Like, I think we could do some kind of an overriding bylaw. And have the municipalities adopt that. Principle from the county, so where everybody's doing the same thing, like to me, that. Is simple, but maybe it's not that simple, but Mike would know that.
I would actually refer to Steve on whether we can pass a bylaw at the county and then have the local municipalities. My understanding is we were asked to draft a bylaw that. If it should be passed and administered at the county or passed and administered at the local.
Or could it be passed and go down to the lower tiers and they adopted? I don't know, but that doesn't, it doesn't make. I don't think it makes, I I it was makes no business sense to do it at the upper tier, I can tell you that. Check anywhere in the province, not doing it.
My only concern about it at this point in time is that we all commit to doing our level best to ensuring. That once it lands at the lower tier, that the it doesn't change the bylaw.
Yeah, we got the same questionnaire, we've got the same everything. It's no reason that has to be different.
Well, you know, I mean, that that's you you're committing to. Ensuring that other members of the lower tier councils are going to agree to that, you know, they. They all have their voice and, you know, when passing a bylaw, they have the right to say, we don't agree. I mean, we would hope that they wouldn't, knowing the amount of work that's been done. Up to us to try and encourage.
We would, you know, we could send that proposal whenever Mister Stone gets it done. Down to the lower tiers and get them to pass the resolution that they adopted. And then 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 we know where they stand. I just wanna move on here, that's all.
I'm sure we all do. Counselor Show.
I'd like to move on too, but I'll just just speaking from Minden Hills. We're having difficulty finding municipal law enforcement officer period. So if it's at the county level, let's say they need two for six hundred in CKL. Maybe we only need three for the whole county, but if it goes down to the lower tier, we probably need eight. Because you're gonna need somebody to do the inspections, somebody to do the administration. So that's the only thing is like, I mean, I know Minden Hills right now, we could not. We could not do this program, if this was in place this summer, we would not be able to keep up with what was required of our municipality. Based on staff, we just, we absolutely just do not have anybody in the position and the one person who was in the position is unfortunately off unwell.
Well, you know, I I know it would be a challenge, we do have a reasonably healthy building and bylaw department. But I I know that it would definitely be a challenge and we would need to hire more staff.
But we can't hire, we can't seem to find anybody, that's my, that's my point, so what happens is if it's, if this is put in place and it's put on the four lower tiers. But one municipality just. Can't keep up with their end of the deal as far as regulating and doing the inspections, et cetera, like what happens?
Well, and if it's at the lower tier, we're all looking for bylaw officers at the same time.
That's my point exactly, and I mean, let's let's be honest, if you work for the county, you'd make a little bit more money than if you do it one of the lower tiers, generally speaking. So perhaps it'd be easier to find three staff members at the county level than it would be to find all of that at the. At the other lower tiers.
Keep in mind, now I I know that this is. Part of a little bit of a different topic, we we, there was some, how do we make out with our interviews for shoreline? A preservation inspectors. Or are we asking our two top sensitive topic right now? Uh, well, I just, I'd like to get an answer from Mister Stone first on that, if was, was there any success there?
Thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council, so in terms of. Attracting a lot of interest, yes, there was a lot of. Interested applicants and. For, we were able to shortlist triple A, double A, single A and then others. So we had probably. I'm gonna say upwards of fifteen who were qualified or was working in some form of a security. Employment that were attractive, so it was quite a good. Interview process for sure.
Counselor Perry, you had a question?
Well, if they're fifteen applied at the county. Why are they not applying to the townships?
Maybe they like the county.
That's a bylaw job.
Well, ask, ask, ask them who they did hire.
Somebody from another township likely.
We hired a staff person from Minden Hills.
Well, that's why you don't have any. Anyway.
Thank you. That has worked both ways.
So that doesn't solve the problem.
Algonquin Highlands just took one from the county, right?
That's roads, it's not by law.
Still people.
So if if there was a. That number of people who applied for the job and 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 more than one that was qualified, it it does show that there are some people out there. They may have some preference about where they want to work, but I mean, that's at least there. There's some hope.
Well, I don't know, our council has talked about it a lot and want to do it, so I don't know whether they'd. Want to delegate authority or not, that's another question.
Well, Counselor Carter is suggesting that we all give this, we we know this has got to come back, whether we like it or not, that this is. So if we take the time for a little bit more thought, given that we've added a new dimension to our discussion in the. A third party provider, we'll get some information with respect to that, learn more about that. And that will help us, I think. Truly, I I know it certainly opened my eyes and made me look at things in a totally different way. I had a huge list of items that I thought we needed to discuss today and I've put them on hold now because of 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 this new opportunity.
Go ahead, it's a really a question for Mister Stone. Would it be possible to develop a list of responsibilities? From start to finish of the process? So that we could, and and Counselor Carter had referenced this earlier in the meeting, we could check. This could be done by third party, this could be done by. But it would, it would allow council to see what's involved in in the administration of the process, is that possible?
Through you, Madam Warren, Teresa Council, it is possible. It'll take, it'll take some time, I'd have to reach out to other. Other municipalities that have been working with the bylaw.
Counselor Ray.
I I think that we have to be careful between getting good information and procrastination. I think we're talking about right now is good information. I I think, I think that this is the kind of stuff we need to sort out before we start making a decision that's gonna. Go into play, so I don't think it's procrastination, I think we we do the due diligence, we do it right. And at the end of the day, we make a good decision that accomplishes something, so I have no problem with deferring it until you get more information and I like the checklist.
I like the checklist, I don't want to defer it for too long, there's an awful lot of pressure out there that that we get. That we land somewhere and we make a decision on this and we can't just keep kicking it down the road. Counselor Carter.
I don't think we're kicking it down the road because we need more information, we need to do this RFI. And he, you know, Mister Stone needs to reword it and all that, so if it. You know, as soon as it can get brought back to council, it's it is, I mean, we we can approve it today, so. Let's uh, let's figure out what what is we have left to do and do it all in the next meeting.
Let's hear what you have for a resolution.
So be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives the June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three planning report, PLN thirty nine dash two thousand twenty three. Entitled the licensing of short. Entitled, The Licensing of Short Term Rentals, that Halliburton County Council to direct staff to proceed as follows. Prepare a request for information to determine the number and capacity of third-party firms to support implementation. Prepare a staff report outlining the process to implement a municipal accommodation tax. That the licensing bylaw be amended as directed by council and brought. And, and that staff be directed to bring a revised draft to the next council meeting. And that staff develop a list of responsibilities associated with the administration and implementation of S T R licensing. I guess I would say to be the next council meeting.
Are you mad, I'm more than, uh, I wouldn't put a, uh, I wouldn't put a next council, council meeting. Uh, just whenever the information is available.
Can I, can it be understood that council would love to see that at the next council meeting?
Well, you know, in particular, I think what we, what we'd like to see is the additional information that we're seeking about the, uh, the third-party provider. Um, and, and where we stand with that, and, and we could go ahead with having them, you know, do a, do a presentation to council, which would. En- enlighten us a lot more or, or ease our minds about their ability to, to manage certain aspects of things. If you needed a little bit more time to develop a list of responsibilities. You know, I, I don't think it all has to come at once, but I, I know that there's some information that we're seeking or things we'd like to see sooner than later. Is that fair?
It, it, it is. I just want to make sure we understand, like, that there's a clear understanding of expectations. Because the, the RFI process will reach out to the marketplace and say, who's prepared to do this, these steps? And who has the capacity to do it? Then that would be at least a month process, I would say, by the, if we give a week to draft it, two weeks in the marketplace. Two and a, and a bit, and then a chance to review it. We're, we're at that point past our next council meeting. So it wouldn't be at the next council meeting. You wouldn't be in a position to interview them or to, for council to see a demo until. Later than that, if we could set up a special meeting for that. After I'm back from vacation, um. But we, we can expedite that process. We'll do it as quickly as possible, but it wouldn't be for the next meeting because it, it's at least a month-long process to do that RFI.
Sound, sound okay with everyone? Okay, could I have a mover and a second or for that motion? Counselor Carter and Ray. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Thank you to all. You know, this is, uh, I think we've really made some, some good steps today. Um, and are, are, are moving ahead. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, can we invite Counselor Dayu back? Welcome back. If we need a separate resolution to receive his report. Uh, it was. Alright, okay, so on to administrative reports. Uh, the first item is correspondence summary listing. Now, I know this is a, a little bit out of order from when your, uh, health unit report would be, Counselor Ray, but. We did add a piece of correspondence to the correspondence summary listing, so if you wanted to just briefly speak to that. Your microphone, Cease.
Um, this came from the H K P R meeting we had last time, which was focused on, on the impact of budgets and. Where they were going in, in, in twenty twenty-four. So as a result of, as reported last month in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Provincial government supplied the H K P R with significant one-time amounts to fund the COVID nineteen battle. As the disease became more managed and the scope of the activities narrowed, but because of their impact on, uh, the COVID nineteen. Some standard operating procedures were eligible for partial COVID nineteen funding. In twenty twenty-four, that COVID nineteen funding will be significantly reduced or eliminated altogether. Mandatory programs under the Ontario Public Health Standards are jointly funded by the province and obligated municipalities. In twenty twenty, the province implemented a policy which changed the funding formula. From the seventy-five twenty-five, which is provincial versus municipal, to seventy-thirty. So now we're picking up a bigger share of that. This formula also applied to several previously one hundred percent funded. Provincial programs that are now going to be in the seventy-thirty split. In twenty twenty-three, the contributions were Northumberland at two point six million, Coretta Lakes at two point three million. And Coretta, uh, Halliburton County was six hundred and four thousand. Uh, like all health units, the K, H K P R has historical. Has, has been extorted underfunded to meet the minimum requirements of those Ontario standards. Had the Consumer Price Index been, uh, annually, uh, used anyway since two thousand eighteen. Uh, the, uh, H K P R would be expecting fourteen point seven million dollars this year from the province. And it looks like there's that, that would, because of, of that not happening, uh, it reduced the amount, uh. By two point seven million dollars, which brings us down to where they're currently funded. Based on the current forecast that expenditures calculated to meet the minimum requirements of the Ontario standards and using. The twenty nineteen funding contribution, the H K P R is projected to have a provincial shortfall of one point nine million dollars. For the twenty twenty-four mandatory programs. Shortfall could be such that the, the health unit will not meet the minimum requirements of the Ontario health standards. And, um, the deficit would have to be offset by the contributing municipalities. So under the twenty twenty-three contribution ratios, Halliburton County would be responsible for approximately eleven percent of the shortfall. Or an additional two hundred and nine thousand dollars on top of what we already pay in twenty twenty-four. The H K P R team takes, uh, its, its responsibilities for physical accountability seriously. And staff are undertaking, uh, thorough analysis of program expenditures, including operation and managerial options.
Hello? Murray, uh, put yourself on mute, please.
To minimize costs while ensuring.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
Okay, no, carry on. He's on mute now.
So, um, the H K P R team takes, uh, responsibility for fiscal accountability seriously. And the staff are undertaking thorough analysis of all the program expenditures, including operational and managerial options to minimize costs while ensuring. That the priority programs areas are significantly, uh, funded to protect the health of the population. Now, David Marshall, Chair of the H K P R Board, wrote a letter on January the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, that would be last week. To the Honorable Sylvia Jones, Deputy, uh, Premier and Minister of Health. Making her aware of the H K P R situation and asking for consideration regarding additional funding. And, uh, I only got the, the letter Friday, so I was not able to put it into it. So if you want, I can read you what, what he has written to the premier and where I'm asking for. Now, you got it.
I don't know that we need to hear you read it. I think that you've given us a pretty good breakdown of the situation.
So if that's the case, what, what we're basically asking for here. Is a support letter from our county being one of the three that are pay, going to hit, like, we're going to hit two hundred and nine thousand bucks. Uh, to support the, uh, the, the letter that was written by the H K P R to, to the premier.
Thoughts? Comments? Counselor Carter.
Well, I, Neil, the only weakness I really find in this is that, you know, if, if, if the. The cost of living from twenty eighteen to today, if us municipalities had received from the government. Um, you know, our funding, uh, which is, you know, this year in, in Minden Hills. Was down an increase of like something into the third decimal point, you know, it was an extra hundred bucks or something. Um, you know, so we, we all are living with this issue. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm willing to support this. But it's, uh, you know, people really have to look, and I don't know all the programs there. But they really have to look at all their programs to find out if there's ways of, of, you know, maintaining the health standards without. With, you know, and maybe having to defund some things that they're doing. But, you know, we're all in, we're all facing the same issue. And, and unfortunately. If, you know, if we're, we're not getting the funding from the provincial government and then they're not getting the funding. And now we have to give even more money to them. Uh, it seems that, uh, this is, this is a circle. It's not going to end well.
Uh, on a number of levels.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, the, the answer is you're absolutely right. Uh, the, the cost of living was put in there to just identify. It doesn't change the one point nine million, though. Okay, and that is the one nine point nine million adjusted with no other changes, other than the fact that we're going to take out the COVID stuff. And do it now that, as I said, they're going to be looking at how to improve everything that they physically can. But what, in the letter, it states, they've also, the province has also added stuff. Which they're not supplying funding for because the funding is being the same as it was in two thousand and eighteen. Which is what they've done with libraries and what they've done with hospitals and everybody else. So the logic is that they're, they're expecting the health unit to reduce their costs and absorb the difference. But at the same time, they're also accountable for the programs that they've been assigned. And the only way that the, that, that the health unit can do that is to adjust the levy to the three municipalities, which is where we come in. So is it going to be two hundred and nine thousand dollars to us? I have no idea. That would be the worst-case scenario. But it looks like it could be, it could be a hundred thousand.
You know, I've, I've got a bit of a problem with this and, and where our priorities are. It seemed to me that the last time where there was an increase, we had absolutely no voice, no choice. It went from twenty-five to thirty-five percent, or to twenty-five to thirty. My concern is, you know, we're hearing the same argument from, from hospital. And, and where's our priorities? I mean, we're being asked for more and more and more assistance, you know, from, from them as well. Can we support everyone in these requests? So, you know, I guess what I'm looking for is a motion to, uh, to support your request and a seconder and then a vote. So you'll move to support the request. And a seconder. Counselor, shell.
Move by Counselor Carter, so I did, I have added a couple of things since.
Okay.
Move by Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Shell, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council support the Halliburton Coretta Pinridge District Health Unit request. That the provincial government increase their contribution to mandatory programs and continue mitigation funding. Further, that if mitigation funding is discontinued, it is requested that the provincial government reverse the seventy-thirty policy decision made in two thousand nineteen. And finally, that notice of this support be sent to M P P Laurie Scott, the Minister of Health and Premier Doug Ford.
All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cease. Uh, gentlemen. Is there support for any other correspondence on the correspondence listing? There's a lot of compelling arguments there, but I think we, we've dealt with some of them and. Hearing none, uh, could I have a mover and a second or then to receive the correspondence? Counselors Carter and McKecney.
Move by Counselor Carter, second by Counselor McKecney, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the correspondence listing for the period of May. Eleventh, two thousand twenty-three to June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor? That's carried. Next up is, uh, Robert to give us a rail trail status report.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, good afternoon, Warden and Council. Uh, this is just a really quick, brief update to advise council that we're. Completing ongoing maintenance activities. We're also working on the terms of reference for the roundtable and, uh. Public Works is also working with economic development and tourism, uh, to respond to the delegations of the committee, the whole, and we expect to report to council in July.
Any questions on the rail trail status report, Counselor Carter?
And I, I, I noted on the news, it was a fatal accident on the trail, I think, just actually south of us, that was more Kinmount area. But is that something that we would? Monitor? To see if that has possible effects on us.
I'll look into it, uh, through the word into the counselor. It's not something I'm aware of right now, but, uh, I'll look into the details of what happened.
I think it was in Coretta Lakes.
What, what, uh, do you have any idea what, uh, what was involved in? And we, it would be good to get some more information about that. Meanwhile, could I have a mover in a second or two, accept the rail trail status report? Counselors Burton and seconded by Counselor Dayu.
Move by Counselor Burton, second by Counselor Dayu, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three rail trail status report.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is the capital budget summary for roads and structures.
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, so this year we have the, uh, the luxury of coming to, with a report where we actually have some additional funds as opposed to last year. Uh, it's traditionally, uh, Public Works has come to council to recommend other items that may be able to be completed with, um, surplus funds. So there's a number of items listed in here and, uh, with the net change to the total capital budget of roads and structures. Uh, as a no change, um, I can note on the, uh, hot mix paving, County Road Three is being pulverized. Uh, they're working on the, the granulars. We're hoping to have it paved for this long weekend. Uh, surface treatment, all three roads have been pulverized and they're working on County Road Ten right now with a granular. With a surface treatment, uh, to occur afterwards. Uh, pavement preservation, this is one where, uh, there's actually the bylaw, uh, being, to be passed today, uh, with this council. Resolution, we're recommending, uh, we've had discussions with the contractor and in here, we're recommending to, to add additional work to their contract. Uh, of approximately forty-one thousand dollars to complete the entire road that was paved in twenty twenty. In addition, in this section, we're also recommending to put out a tender for crack sealing at an approximate value of fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this summer, and we would be reporting back to council in August, uh, with updated numbers to ensure that we could, uh, complete the contract within budget. And if other expenses came up that we're not expecting right now, uh, we'd have other o- options and recommendations for council. Then we have, uh, County Road Twenty-One, there's the signals at the independent, it suffered a failure in the loop detectors in the spring. We're recommending, uh, to go to tender for a thirty thousand dollar approximate tender to fix the, uh, detection system there for the lights. The transfer to road reserves, we're recommending no change to that. And the Goodarm Bridge, uh, can note that the closure went very well yesterday. It actually was reopened about twelve hours early. Uh, and we're recommending just because of the bridge, uh, there are some additional causes, costs that we're aware of. Um, to add some additional budget to that project of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars or about ten to twelve percent contingency amount. The design for the Potash Lake Bridge. We're recommending a decrease in that budget as we've had some staff do some consultant work, so we've saved some funds there. And lastly, we've got some structural carryover projects because we did so many projects last year. We still have minor works that the consultants have to inspect and we have to pay them for their, uh, their time. And we also have some work that, for example, on the, the Drag River Bridge, that we didn't accept the paving of the bridge structure last year. So once that's to our standards, we'll have to pay that this year. Normally, these minor amounts are kind of covered in the reserve budgets, but because it's the significant amount. We're identifying it here because the structural reserve budget is, uh, rather low.
Questions? Out of curiosity, exactly where and what road is the Potash Lake Bridge on?
Uh, County Road Nine.
Could I have a mover in a second or two, approving recommendations? Counselors McKecney and Carter.
Move by Counselor McKecney, second by Counselor Carter, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received for information the June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three staff report. Capital budget summary, roads and structures, and finally, that Halliburton County Council approved the proposed budget allocation changes as noted in this report.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Next is your capital budget summary for the fleet.
Thank you, Warren. Uh, again, this one just showing that where we are with the, uh, the purchases to date. Council already approved the transfer from reserve to cover the cost for a pickup truck that came in over budget. So if I go through the items here, there is, there's no, uh. Request here to change any sort of funding or budget. It's just kind of an information report to let council know that, uh, where we stand with the tandem plow as well as, um. Our backhoe that we've got in service. There was a little, a bit of a hiccup on the four by four pickup truck. Uh, whereby the contract had to be canceled because the dealer couldn't, uh, commit to providing the, uh, orange pickup truck that we ordered. Uh, subsequently to that, the, uh, factory was able to commit to actually, uh, producing the vehicle this year. So we've. Implemented a single sole source documentation to kind of restart that contract and get the vehicle for the same conditions, the same price that was in the original RFP. Uh, the last note in there is just to give council some, uh, information that we are looking at options. We did lose a vehicle to a deer strike in the end of last year. Uh, we did receive those, a small payment, uh, from our insurance company, but we're just looking at options to try to replace that vehicle. We, as with insurance, you don't get how much it's, the replacement class is not even close. So we'll, um. Again, we're looking at options and if we need to come back to council for direction or just to inform council what we're doing. Um, again, it's just trying to keep you up to date on where we stand with our capital budget and our acquisitions.
Great information. Any questions? Uh, could I have a mover in a second or then to accept that report? Councillors Dayu and Carter.
Move by councillor Dayu, second by councillor Carter. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received for information the June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three staff report, capital budget summary fleet.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is the Halliburton County Paramedic Service responses to the master plan recommendations. Welcome Chief Wade.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Um, so as everyone's aware, we had a, a master plan completed, uh, begin, it began in August last year, completed in, uh, late January. Um, out of that master plan, there was, uh, several recommendations. Um, and they, uh, they listed them as, uh, recommending immediate. Short term, which is one to three years, midterm, four to seven years, and long term, eight to ten years. So, um, I've drafted the responses, uh. That we have as far as what the recommendations are now. I'm just wondering, do you want me to go through them one by one or does anyone just have any questions? About my response with regards to the responses?
Um, I, I think it might be fair to say if, if anyone's got any questions or concerns or comments they'd like to make or, or would you like, uh. Chief Wade to go through it item by item? Mr. Carter.
I just have a couple of questions.
Go ahead then.
So the, um, this was on the, the one about, uh, no longer certifying management as paramedics. I just maybe explain that, uh, to everybody. I think I understand, but just like to hear it.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, um. In a lot of services, management don't maintain certification. Um, one of the difficulties is, and, and I even find it myself, is that when you're not out there doing calls every day, you don't maintain that, that skill level. Um, and the skill level has increased, you know, exponentially in the last few years. Originally, when management was, you know, they were certified through the base hospital, it may have been five medications and defibrillation. Now there's twenty medications, um, and there's a lot more skills to be maintained and protocols to be. Memorized. And so there becomes, when you're not doing calls on a regular basis, it, it does get to, uh. A discomfort level or an anxiety level when you're trying to maintain that and then manage a service. So that's, that's where I think that comment came at some point.
So I guess my only question was that the, the whole. You know, the whole area of emergency management and disaster planning and so on and so forth is. Does that, does that weaken our service in any way? If, if you, if you needed, uh, sort of an all hands on deck type of scenario.
I don't think so. Um, i- it does give us the ability to, as, as myself, I could first respond on a call, but we'd be backed up by an ambulance pretty quick. Um, it still doesn't stop us responding to assist, uh, to drive. Or, or whatever assistance we can provide at the scene. It just restricts us, it would restrict management if they weren't certified to perform delegated skills. So injections, administration, medications.
Councillor Dayu.
Um, so within that cohort would be included the, the new superintendent positions that we discussed at the master plan.
No, if I may, that I, the, if, if we included superintendents, they would maintain certification. It would just be your chiefs, deputy chiefs.
I have to say, I am particularly happy about number four. I think it's number four, assess the need for dedicated resource in El Gongo Islands. It's been a long time coming. It's been an argument that's made many times at this table that, uh, we've contributed to other endeavors that have benefited other municipalities and, uh. And it's just for the purposes of, of better coverage and for, uh, for equal. Equal coverage. I'm just really glad to see us moving ahead with, uh, you know, at least the initial stages of that. And also recognizing that you're jam packed full and ready to move into closets at the headquarters and that, you know, that we need to start to. Taking a look at the space for both people and vehicles.
Yes, correct.
Um, any other comment or question on this report? See none then? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive it? Um, councillor Dayu and let's say councillor Fury. Just gotta get you on the record, Mary.
Well, I'd like to see that in case I'm there today.
Move by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor Fury. Be it resolved that Halliburton County, uh, council. Received report EMS oh six dash twenty-three, providing responses to the recommendations presented in the county paramedic master plan.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, sir. Next is the IT digital strategy RFP. Afternoon, Mr. March.
Good afternoon. So, uh, for you today is a report regarding the joint county municipal digital strategy RFP. Um, as mentioned in the report, this was a budgeted initiative for twenty twenty-three. Uh, forty thousand dollars allocated for the project with fifty percent coming from the county and the remaining fifty percent split between the, the four municipalities. The RFP was released in May and closed on June ninth. Um, six bids were received, but only three were compliant. Uh, and those three bids all came in over budget, uh, ranging in price from sixty six thousand to eighty six thousand. So, um, I did speak to the CAOs about the cost overrun and because of the value that we all see in the project. Uh, everyone did agree that we should still try to move forward if at all possible. Yesterday, the evaluation committee met and selected a vendor for the IT digital strategy RFP. Um, the group was unanimous. In its decision due to the quality and the detail provided in the winning vendor's proposal. Um, that vendor has a ton of experience delivering digital strategies in the public sector, both at the very small organizations, right up to the, to the very large. That winning proposal was just over seventy five thousand dollars. Um, assuming that, uh, we would be hearing, adhering to the same cost allocation for this project. The county share of the budget overrun would be seventeen thousand dollars or seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy seven dollars. Um, which I am respectfully requesting be allocated from the remaining safe restart funding. Should council decide to proceed with the IT digital strategy RFP and allow us to award it. Um, I do understand that this is a significant cost overrun for this project. Um, however, I do feel strongly about the, um. For the benefits that could be realized through this, through this initiative. Um, I believe that a digital strategy will position our municipalities so that they can meet the needs of a growing population, expecting. More and more of their services to be delivered online. And I think it will also position our IT team better to be able to deliver. Uh, and meet the needs of our, uh, of a growing, um. Of, of a staff complement who have to then be able to provide these digital services to the, to the populace. So that is, that is my report. I don't know if anybody has any questions on it. Um. But I'm more than.
Or concerns, councillor Carter.
Just to comment, I, I imagine if, if we have a solid digital strategy, it'll also make your world easier on cybersecurity and, and other things.
They, if I may, so they will be touching on cybersecurity, even though we didn't ask for it in this digital strategy because we, we went through the, um. Cybersecurity maturity review that was, that was delivered at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, but they will be touching on that. They're gonna be touching a lot about, about IT governance best practices, which I see go hand in hand with being able to run all aspects of IT better.
Any other questions or concerns? Uh, could I have a mover in a second or to accept the recommendation? Councillor Shell and Carter.
So just before I read the resolution, we're able to be a little more specific now. The original resolution in the staff report talked about an upset limit. Now that we know. The exact amount, I can include the exact amount in the resolution. So moved by councillor Shell, second by councillor Carter. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three report on the IT digital strategy RFP. And that Halliburton County Council approves allocating, uh. Seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy seven dollars of additional safe restart funding to be used towards the IT digital strategy RFP.
All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is a report from the CAO on strategic planning and a six month action plan. Over to you, sir.
Thank you, Warden. I, um, when we, we spoke about this at the beginning of your term, um, we had planned a strategic planning exercise. Um, we've had a, a number of things happen in the meantime where we've, they've taken sort of priority over, over that exercise. Uh, we're now at a point where, where, we're five months from the end of my tenure here and I just, I, I really think. Doing a strategic plan at this point would be, um, almost unfair to the person who, who succeeds me. So, um. I, what I'm recommending is that we, uh, council, I've tried to lay out a six month action plan. So over the next six months, this is what we'll be working on. These are not the only things that staff will be working on, but they are the things that I would be most involved in. So, um, I'm, I'm, uh. I'm proposing to put those in an action plan that would take the place of a, a strategic plan for now. Um, and then allow council, um, to do a strategic plan with your new CAO, uh, early in the new year. So, um, in terms of, I, I, again, I, to, to Tim's point, I'm not sure if you want me to go through every one of those things or just. I've tried to lay out when we would be coming forward with things, uh, where possible. Um, but, uh, you can. I'm, I'm certainly happy to answer questions or go through them in detail if you'd like.
Preference? Are there any questions about this report? I think that it is a reasonable approach. Councillor Rayal.
Yeah, Mike, it's very detailed. The only thing I'm seeing missing unless, unless it's not part of it is the status of the shoreline preservation. And where we are with that.
I, I didn't include it, be largely because I think we've implemented, we're, we're implemented already and the, the process has been ongoing. We've. Now, as we heard earlier in the meeting, we've staffed it up and so, uh, we've, we've purchased a vehicle. We've, we've staffed it up and. I've, I've not heard any complaints. I'm not sure, you know, if, if any other member of council has any feedback, I'd be happy to, uh, hear that. But, uh, in my, in my mind, it's, it's really just, um, a maintenance exercise now.
Also, do you?
This may be stealing from Peter to give to Paul and Fred, and by stealing, I mean from, from you in your remaining, in your remaining months, but. I absolutely understand the logic behind waiting for the next CAO to do, to implement. The development of a strategic plan. I wonder if there are things that we could do now so as not to lose. The time that it would take them to get the ball rolling, given the wealth of things that they'll have to get to know, such as figuring out. Um, who would be involved, how much time it would take, what the budget would be, that sort of thing now. But the, 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 the content, the fill comes when the, the new CAO is on board.
Happy to do that if that's something you council directs.
Not sure I'm exactly clear on what it is you're suggesting and I see it's the odd furrowed brow in your group.
I'm happy to take another stab.
Okay.
Um, so if the CAO comes in January, they've got lots of stuff to learn about and to do and to implement. And within all of that, it sounds like we would be asking them to figure out how to go about doing a strategic plan and then also implement. The strategic conversations of that plan. And I wonder if some of that prep work could be done in the remaining year. So that when the new CAO comes, it's not up to them to start brainstorming. Okay, how are we gonna do a strategic plan? Who's gonna be involved? Who could the consultants be? Maybe that prep work could be done in advance.
I see now, I, I'll look to other comments. I can see you've got a comment to make.
Yeah, I, I fully support what you're saying. I, you know, I look at it from the perspective of. Uh, you know, before you decide on your strategy, you have to set your goals and objectives. And, uh, you know, you know, what it is that we want to do and what this, what is the strategic plan going to do for us? And that would be something that it would be very difficult for somebody new to step in. And particularly if they're not a local, uh, person or anything like that. So that's a, a first step that we can accomplish. With you because you know us and, and we know you and, and you know, you have all this background on, and the area and then. Even the, the sort of the start to define what the strategic plan would look like, not the parts, not the doing. You know, but it, it allows somebody to come in and, and they, part of their job description and, and their tasks are already laid out for them. For when they start because they know that this is, this is a big part of what I have to do. And, uh, we've already got it started. So that I, I think that's, that's a brilliant use of time.
I tend to disagree. I, I, you know, I can see some value to it. Um, but I, you know, I, I would expect that anybody who comes here to replace our C- CAO. Would certainly know what steps were involved in doing a strategic plan. What our goals and priorities would be to me are part of that strategic plan. Process itself. Um, I'm, I'm seeing, uh, councillor Rayal's hand up and.
This, this is a similar process to what, uh, Chris Stevenson went through when he became CEO of the library. Where Anna had prepared the strategic plan, outlined everything that needed to be done. The areas that we are dealing with. She'd done some preliminary homework and when Chris came in, he hardly missed a beat when, when he hit the ground going. He was able to basically take that, that implementation plan and follow it because she had given him. Of the direction that he needed to follow up and he didn't have to really reinvent the wheel. He, he, obviously he took time, but if you think about it, it didn't take long for that library strategic plan to get, to get implemented and put in place. So. I, I realize Mike has a lot of stuff to do. I'm just saying there's a lot of value in what. And, and what councillor Dayu said.
I guess that, that my thinking is that you would look to, and I think that that's kind of what was, um. Mr. Redder's thinking when he gave us this report is that you, you want your CAO to be part of the development of the strategic plan. Uh, that, that it's, it's, he may wish, or he or she, um, may wish to take us in a slightly different direction. Um, I, you know, I, I guess that there's value in looking at it from, from both perspectives and, you know, it's. Mike has laid out, you know, some of the things that need to be done and what, how he. Plans on moving forward and if he can offer some, uh, you know, some preliminary work that would aid in that process. Like, that's great, but I'm hoping that there's, really hoping that there's some overlap time, um, with the two individuals to be able to talk about where we're at and where we're going forward and.
Um, so given that, maybe some thought could be given to, you know, how can we just set the table for that conversation? For example, if we choose to have an external facilitator come and, and, and facilitate.
Be my expectation.
Right. So say our ideal facilitator needs a year lead in time because they've got so many things booked back to back. Wouldn't it be better to try to secure them now and, and start that clock going? So we don't lose an extra six months or so down, down the road and that wouldn't have any influence on what that person does. Influence on what that person does with us, which can be. But fed in by the the new say C A O, it would just start the clock running a little bit before they are able to start it themselves.
I I'd be astounded if it took us a year to get a facilitator to do a strap link, but. I'm I'm not disagreeing. I'm just that's just one aspect of it. I don't see. Go ahead, councillor Carter.
So in my career, I I I I my expertise was going into an organization was a mess. And 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 trying to fix it and the and the thing is is that that always took a lot of time. Okay, and any any to any time you go into something new, you have a lot of learning. The the one thing we lose with a uh, you know, uh. Or when what we gain with the new C A O is, you know, maybe somebody younger and better looking or or something like that.
That shouldn't be hard.
But but what we lose is these decades of experience and knowledge of us and our community. And so the the idea of setting the table as as the council rail and council day have said. Is is is, I think it would be a huge advantage for whoever comes in. It's not that they, you know, they're 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 going to be restricted is what they're going to do. They're going to. Develop and implement the strategic plan, but to get to get the basics there of these are the, you know, the key issues. These are the this, this is what Halliburton is and all those types of things are, I think it's invaluable for. For anybody new coming in, if we want to get them to respond in something, you know, like we said, less than a year, if you want to do this, so.
Any other thoughts or comments? I can see laying the groundwork. It really could be a helpful thing to do. I I don't want to overload, Mister Redder.
Mike might have to cancel all those call passes you booked.
If we leave that with uh with Mike for now, see what uh what his thoughts are on that. Um, are there any other questions about aspects of what he's laid out here for his action plan for for the next few months? Could I then have a mover in a second or to receive and recommend moving forward, councillors McKechnie and Carter?
Moved by councillor McKechnie, seconded by councillor Carter, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received. Uh, C L K fifteen dash two thousand twenty three, the Strategic Planning and Six Month Action Plan Update. And further, that staff be directed to proceed as outlined in the report.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, next are reports in minutes from external boards and agencies. Um, was there other information that you'd like to bring to us about the health unit, councillor Al?
No, the only other thing that we discussed was the the challenge of immunization with young people and. How, if if at all possible, it could be done through pharmacies similar to what COVID did and. At this point in time, Doctor Bocking is not sure that could be done because of the types of vaccines that need to be uh used and they may or may not be. Capable of being handled by a pharmacy for injection purposes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I'm not sure it's a big deal, but on the agenda, has councillor Daya giving the Board of Health, then it should be councillor I'll just yeah, just for history sake.
The correction has been made.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, at point in time, as you can see, we have a a report from from through councillor McKechnie. You know, if there are any questions on that. I would say that um the I did attend Point in Times A G M last week, um and. Yeah, I really got to say that their A G M is the most feel good A G M that a person could go to. They they really are a lovely and very supportive group acknowledging, you know, all the work that their folks do and. Really, it was a most a most enjoyable A G M if indeed A G M's can be such a thing. But, you know, nothing in in particular to report as a result of that, just their their regular business. Um, and as you all know, councillor Dayu will be assuming that responsibility to represent us with point in time. Way forward. Um, the nothing in particular to report on the. Eastern Ontario Wardens Wardens Caucus, other than we do have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. Um, we will be doing some preparation work um with respect to delegations that the Wardens Caucus is going to be making at EMO. And and in particular, I've volunteered to work on a presentation. With respect to paramedic services and where our priorities lie there. There have been a number of recommendations that I spoke to at a previous meeting. About paramedic services in Eastern Ontario, and I hope to sit down with the chief weight and and Mister Redder. Before I have my discussions on her on the delegation material. Uh, there is a proposal uh for the southeastern Ontario Production Accelerator. Accelerator Fund um that maybe you could speak to that just briefly.
Um, you're welcome. At our meeting a few months ago, which is my excuse for not maybe being prepared to explain this, um we had a. There's a a lot of film production activity or television show production activity happening all across the province. And and in Northern Ontario, there's actually a fund that has been established to to, I guess, almost. Incentivize that activity to happen in those communities and but not no such uh program exists in the southwestern part of the province, which we're included in. And so they're suggesting that they would like that um. And they they presented us with, I mean, the economic activity that is generated by. Film production or television show production is really substantial, and so they're saying that for a very small investment, it could leverage. Uh, you know, a very large return on investment for communities that are involved in film production. Um, I can say that we've had um, I I wouldn't say we get. Calls often, but we do get calls regularly asking for, um, you know, whether whether we would be open to, you know, having productions done here. Um, so uh certainly, you know, I I think our our landscape and our 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 community is conducive to that, so. The Wardens Caucus has supported this and they're asking that each of the local or each of the counties inside uh supported as well, and and so that's resolution is here today.
So we're looking for support for that. Could I have a mover in a second or or maybe I should ask first, either any questions? Could I have a? Go ahead.
Just a comment, uh, I think not last year, the year before in July, I was driving into downtown Huntsville and I got to the bridge and it was filled with snow. And um and uh, you know, I I had the radio on, so there was no adverse weather reports. And then as I drove through downtown, the whole town was filled with snow. Um, and it was exactly that. It was a film production, which obviously, you know, there was lots of money involved. And putting snow on the streets in July is not an easy thing to do, but uh it's, I think this is worth it.
Thanks for a good Hallmark movie.
Exactly.
So a mover in a second or to support them, councillors Carter and Royal.
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor Ryle, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the May twenty six, two thousand twenty three correspondence. From the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus requesting support for the launch of the southeastern Ontario Production Accelerator Fund. And that Halliburton County Council support the proposal by the E O W C. And finally, that staff be directed to forward a letter indicating councils.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Um, there is also just for your uh late reading entertainment, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Newsletter. There for your information. Um, is there anything to report on the uh Halliburton, Quarter Lakes, Halliburton Joint Social and Housing Services Committee?
Yes, we we actually had a meeting and I'm disappointed that the minutes aren't available, but one of the. We generally have this meeting on the same day as um the Quarter Lakes Halliburton Housing Corporation. And they always used to be held in a certain order, and for some reason, this year they reversed the order of those two meetings. Um, now that's problematic because it conflicts with meetings that uh I believe we have here at the county. And it conflicts with the um um committee meetings of the councillors from Court the Lakes. And so actually getting people at the meeting is is very difficult and people of summer arriving late, summer. Are leaving early, some just aren't making it at all, so that I think I'm making a recommendation that we reverse them back. Because if the timing was reversed, it would make it easier for everybody and I. But.
Well, obviously, some rejigging needs to be done.
Something, uh, the only thing of of note that came out of it is, I think it's that locally important is the fact that. You know, we have agreement from the M T O that they don't need an additional lane. Of uh traffic in front of the uh the Highway thirty five housing project after two and a half years of negotiation. Um, the only thing that happened was that they, even though it was they who had changed the design of the of the facility. Um, they now, they said, well, you've changed the design of facility from the original, so now you have to do another traffic study. One of the problems was is that we had the original traffic study but done by D M Wills. And then Minden went out and hired D M Wills to do planning, so there was almost a conflict of interest. But we had at uh, because the the traffic study wasn't going to Minden Hills, it was really for the M T O. Minden Council agreed to let D M Wills do the study, so that took place and has been. Uh, given to the M T O, so we might finally get the M T O in an agreement so that we. And we need that agreement so that we can get the um our our building permits finalized, so we can actually go out and get a quote. You know, so you know, M T O added a few years to the project, but hopefully now we can uh, we can be moving forward.
How frustrating. Just know, is there any timeline now that you can foresee where?
Well, we're going in for a quote. Unfortunately, interest rates keep going up and the cost of materials aren't really dropping uh anything. Um, significantly, so we don't know, but uh, you know, if we are shovel ready, maybe then. You know, our friends on the Wardens Caucus um might be able to say, hey, we're looking for shovel ready projects for for our new initiative. And so we would be in that position.
They have been so advised.
Yeah, we're. Keep putting anything forward that we can in Missouri. Okay, thank you. Um. So next would be professional recruitment, and I actually, thanks to our recruiter, have a little bit of report here. Um, the physicians appreciation event that was held in May, um, there were twenty four people in attendance, which included the. E R family and locum physicians and their partners, two residents and three physician candidates. Everybody seemed to enjoy themselves or slow to leave. Um, and it was suggested that this become a a bit of an annual event, and I I think that that's a good suggestion. Uh, going forward that we try and do something like this, you know, change it up maybe a little bit each year, but. It uh it sounds like it was successful and a good idea to continue with. Um, she did attend a three day uh a primary conference in June. Uh, was attended by twelve hundred healthcare professionals, mainly physicians from across the country, but also nurse practitioners. Uh, there were a number of clicks on the virtual booth, a number of downloads of the video that that we had. Um, drone footage of triple H S and and the clinic. Um, Hallidoc website had eighty seven percent increase during the three days of the conference, a number of downloads. Uh, from our summary page and and of our financial incentives. We've had several inquiries from nurse practitioners which uh were forwarded to uh the course of like North Core, the. Fourth and North uh with respect to the urgent care clinic. Um, and we have four email inquiries for more information, you know, on our recruitment initiatives. Uh, there's also work being done on recruitment for hospitalist weeks. Uh, we have successfully recruited physicians to cover five weeks at triple H S as well as coordinating their accommodations. And an introductory meeting with an interim C E O Veronica Nelson has been held. Um, there was a physician candidate visit in May who spent four days here in the county. Uh, referring to his time here as life changing, which is awfully nice to hear. Um, this person has been booked to Locum for a couple of weeks early in September before making a final decision of coming here with a full time practice. Uh, there's a physician candidate visit due in two weeks for a four day coordinated visit. Uh, there's been some inquiries uh made and we're looking at uh a coordinating a couple of visits this summer. Um, and our recruiter is also looking at recruiting for a medical director of Highland Wood Long Term Care. So lots of work being done and 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 some solid opportunities on the on the horizon, so. Any questions or comments?
On the councillor Carter, sorry.
I think the physician, right, there are at least two councillors there. We got to developing that all the residents that were that were there, I think, so.
Uh, yeah, I I do think if we uh if we do for go forward to have this event on an annual basis, there needs to be a greater emphasis on councillor attendance and in particular my own. Uh, okay, uh, next is the uh library board. Anything that you'd like to bring forward, councillor Shell?
Sure, just a few things. Um, we welcomed a new board member last week to our meeting. Um, her name is Jacqueline Aluka. Um, and also last week, some members of the board visited all of the Halliburton County Public Library facilities on a branch tour. Uh, the library C E O will be setting up presentations to local councils this summer and early fall. The summer reading program has started and it's for all ages, and Chris wanted me to add that it's including adults. And just a reminder to the board that there are no library board meetings in July and August. Are there any questions?
That word is very disappointing to hear that news. Any questions on the library board? Thanks, councillor Shell. Uh, could I then have a mover in a second or to accept the uh? Minutes and information from these reports, councilors McKechnie and Carter.
Moved by councillor McKechnie, seconded by councillor Carter, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the following. The May eighteenth, two thousand twenty three approved minutes from H K P R and the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty three Board of Health Summary Report. The April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three Board Minutes from Point in Time Center for Children, Youth and Parents. The June twenty five, two thousand twenty three E O W C Newsletter. And the May tenth, two thousand twenty three approved minutes and the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty three draft minutes from the Halliburton County Public Library.
All in favor? It's carried. Next is the uh county's land division.
Thank you, Adam Warren, to rest of council. So we uh had very productive meeting earlier in June, six applications were considered and approved. And we also welcomed our newest and fifth member, William or Bill Donald to the committee. Thank you very much.
And we are very fortunate to have a new member that 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 worked out quite well. Uh, any questions on the land division? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive that report, councillors Royal and Burton?
Moved by councillor Ryle, seconded by councillor Burton, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the planning report, P L N forty two dash two thousand twenty three entitled Land Division Activity Report. For June two thousand twenty three for information.
All in favor? That's carried. Not sure that there is anything under under other external boards and agencies under C P A, and then we did have a brief discussion and talking about trying to set up a. Uh, another date to continue discussions. And we did receive an update from E R on their activities. Anything on poverty reduction and councillor Fury?
No, there's nothing on it. There's a meeting coming up, but that's the first I've heard from them this week.
Okay, thank you.
Seems like a lot of people sitting around the poverty reduction table, but anyway, hope we're helping. Hope we're helping.
Do we have a resolution for other external boards and agents? Okay, under other business. We have two items. One that was added at the last minute was a resolution with respect to. The C E O recruitment. Counselors Fury and myself met with our H R Director. And the two. Shortlisted candidates for recruiting. One was Hadad and Associates and the other was Feldman Daxson. And they were, you know, both very, very close in what they had to offer for services. Their prices were almost exactly the same. We all unanimously agreed that that we liked what we heard from Hadad and Associates. We liked what we heard from both of them, but we just thought that. Mister Hadad was much more suited to. Eastern Ontario, eastern and rural Ontario in particular. He seems to have a very, very. Good understanding of municipal business and 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 the positions that we're all in today, so. I'd like to to have a mover and a second or to approve Hadad and Associates to move forward with their recruitment process. That's just McKechnie and Burton.
Moved by Counselor McKechnie, seconded by Counselor Burton, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council enter into a recruitment services agreement with Hadad and Associates. For their quoted price of twenty-nine thousand dollars plus H S T.
All in favor? Thank you for that. I we just wanted to be able to go ahead with our with our initial. Meeting to get things rolling and and we'll just sort of have to talk about what we're looking for. And that can happen fairly soon now that we've got this resolution in place. The second item of business that's been added under other business is the appointment and affirmation of our deputy warden. So I understand we need to.
Read something. Yes, it's just his declaration of office. That's all we require.
Hi, David Burton, having a. A claim who have been elected to the office of Deputy Warden of the Council of Corporation of the County of Halliburton to solemnly promise and declare. That I will truly faithfully and partially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof. For the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any precarious interest directly or indirect in accordance with the Municipal Conflict Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear to a leading to His Majesty King Charles the Third. And I make them so as a promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it's not the same for us and in fact. As made under oath.
Yeah, thank you, sir, and congratulations. And that leaves us with bylaws and the. The first is a bylaw with respect to our application of asphalt. On County Road One, could I have a mover in a second or for that bylaw? Counselors Dayu and Ryle.
Moved by Counselor Dayu, seconded by Counselor Ryle, be it resolved that by law four-one-eight-six, being a bylaw to authorize an agreement with Superior Road Products Limited. For the application of asphalt rejuvenator on nine point eight kilometers of County Road One. Be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and sealed the corporation be a fixed.
All in favor? That's carried. The next is the appointment of Counselor Dayu to the Point in Time Board. Have a mover in a second or for them? Counselors Burton and Burton.
Moved by Counselor Burton, seconded by Counselor Carter, be it resolved that by law four-one-eight-seven, being a bylaw to amend by law four-one-three-eight. Respecting the appointment of of members of council and public representatives of the corporation and the County of Halliburton. And to appoint members of council as representatives. Of the corporation and the County of Halliburton to external boards and organizations be considered to be read a first, second, third time. Finally passed and the seal of the corporation to be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Counselor Dayu. Is there any notice of motion? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or for the confirming bylaw? Counselor Ryle and Carter.
Moved by Counselor Ryle, seconded by Counselor Carter, be it resolved that by law four-one-eight-eight, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and the seal of the corporation be a fixed.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, could I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor McKechnie. Seconded by Counselor Carter.
Moved by Counselor McKechnie, seconded by Counselor Carter, be it resolved that the June twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks very much.